...a different college each week.
Yeah, exactly.
It's true.
Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, January 8th, 2015. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just want to start off the meeting saying Happy New Year to everybody.
Happy New Year.
2015, we'll buy quick. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes regular session minutes of December 18th, 2014, and acceptance of warrants 25 v. 15, 27 v. 15, 26 p. 15, and 28 p. 15.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We can talk to our student rep, Vanessa.
Hi Vanessa.
Hi Vanessa.
Hi there. So this week, actually, our JV ski team, they actually won their first race that they had, so that was pretty awesome.
Right.
Mr. Larson is one of the heads on that, so we were talking about today. Also, there tonight, there is a performance by the advanced acting class that there is, and it's called Check Please. It's actually pretty funny. It's about like these blind dates that go horribly wrong. A lot of my friends were in it, and I saw them do, like, practice, so it was pretty cool to watch. And also, the musical tickets for this year's curtains go on sale next Wednesday online, so for anyone that's interested in that.
Next Wednesday?
I'm in that show, so it's pretty good.
Is that new to be online?
Yeah, this year is the first time we're doing it online. It's gonna make everything a lot more organized. Before, it was like, oh, we oversold these tickets.
Yeah. So you can't do that at all? You can't buy them in school?
Uh, you might be able to buy a few of them, like, the week before the show or show.
Okay. Wow, that's a good idea.
Yeah. And we also, the music department's selling Celtics tickets that are a little more expensive than normal, but it's like, a lot of the money goes towards our music department, so that's also an awes- awesome sale that we're doing. And we have midterms coming up in the next few weeks, so we're all getting a little stressed out about that, but that's okay. And also, like you guys know, that Duca districts were today, so all the kids did well.
Yeah, I'll talk a little about them to you.
That's great. Were you excited to go back to school after that kind of long vacation? Or hesitant?
That's a loaded question, isn't it?
Yeah. I was like, I was ready to get up out of bed for once. Excited maybe.
Schedules aren't a bad thing sometimes.
Yeah, it was a good vacation, but...
It was definitely a long...
Yeah, I decided I liked Thursday as having Christmas because New Year's, you did have a little bit of...
Extra time.
Extra time. It's hard when it's New Year's Day and then you're back the next day.
Yeah, then you're back, I agree. Yeah, that's good. That's good. It sounds like everybody's busy. I'm happy to hear about the ski team. That's good.
Yeah, they're doing great.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda? Alright, we can move right along to Mr. John Pingree from the GAA is here.
Mr. Pingree.
Nice to see you.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. This time, he's here because we have a wonderful project that's at the end.
Yeah, we're done. I don't have to tell you any bad news or deliver you anything, any problems, or it's, I would say, ninety-nine percent completed. We have a few odds and ends to clean up, but it's been a long road. Ten years of planning and, you know, six years of development, and it's finally come to an end, and a lot of people deserve some credit, including Mrs. Jacobs over there. It's been tremendous in her tireless efforts, and Mark Perry and Peter Durkey in the production process has been unbelievable with Mike Anderson, and our light department has been tremendous with helping us out with wiring and all kinds of stuff. It's amazing, the townspeople, what a good job on how they'll step up when, when, when you ask them, you know? When there's a good project and they wanna help, you know, it's unbelievable, we'll help, especially, you know, light department and highway have been unbelievable.
Oh yeah, that's not necessarily the case everywhere, you know?
Yeah, I mean, most of the time, those things would be charged off of...
Yeah, it doesn't surprise me.
Charged off.
We didn't, you know, we got lots of work done by professional people like that, and they didn't charge us for it. I mean, that's the type of thing that, you know, made us get in within the budget. We wouldn't have been able to get in within the budget without asking for more money, without, you know, Peter Durkey and, you know, Scott Edwards and guys like that really stepping up and helping us out.
Well, that's great. So how do you feel about the project? I see you out there all the time, walking the perimeter and...
I keep a close eye on things.
Oh, that's great.
Let's put it that way.
But how do you feel about the overall...
I'm ecstatic. I am, I think it looks unbelievable.
Good.
Walked it, you know, they did a fantastic job out there.
Yeah, the kids are so pleased with it.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm really excited that it's done. I can't wait to see the first events taking place, and it's time to see the townspeople go out there, you know? If it was up to me, I'd like to build a little skating rink out there. We're not using it now, but that's just me, you know? Get the boards going, I'd be standing out there at night flooding the thing.
And he would, he did that, used to do that in his yard, right?
I know, I know.
I hear they're chomping at the bit over at high school to get onto the field, isn't it?
I'm sure they are. Well, I spoke to the engineer yesterday, all the warranties are in effect, so you can open that field up and everything's good to go.
The only thing Joan wants to make sure of, she just wants to make sure that the town has insured it.
Uh-huh.
You know, so all the warranties are done, but we need to make sure the town is insured because we don't want anybody to get hurt and then there not be a...
Yeah, I don't know about the town issues, but as far as the warranties and stuff that are supposed to be in place, all that is in place, so they're...
Who has the keys?
You know, we're good to go.
We have the keys. Actually, I think Mark Perry has a key.
To the gate.
To the gate.
Yeah.
To the gate. But the kids are getting on other ways than the gate.
That was a, it was a discussion at the Safety Committee, which I'll report on at that moment.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see the field opened up for people to use it when it's not, you know, it always has been opened up, so if some people are out there using it, you want to see the kids using the fields. There's so few good facilities for them to use and things to do, you know? It's one of my other ideas, I think, you know, when you move out of Pearlie, you should make a youth center in there with the senior center. You know, maybe, what the hell?
Oh, boy.
The kids need a place to go, something to do, you know, they really do, you know? That's why I'd like to see, you know, Friday Night Football and Friday Night Lacrosse or Soccer. It's gonna be a good thing to get kids, you know, something to do, a place to go.
Oh, boy.
I wanna see me tarred and feathered.
I know, let's just put a box of sneakers somewhere.
That is quite an idea.
But John, you and I do amazing things together, so maybe there's something we can come up with at some point. May not be Pearlie, but, you know, we can work on that. We can work on that. You need another project to work on. What are you gonna do without...
I know, it'll be interesting, we'll see what's next.
Worrying about the turf field.
But I think Mark and I are pretty much at the, at the end here, so I think Mark and I's turn of time at GAA is pretty much over by, in July, so we're gonna get this all set up. We'll have a trust all set up, ready to go, to have the field, all the stuff, you know, so it's replaced and ready. We'll have the money ready for, within ten years, I would say, to have another field, you know, just looking like, just like this one. It may last longer, you know, we don't know, they don't know exactly how it goes, but as I was telling Peter earlier, there's, there's no amount of use that it, you can twenty-four seven, doesn't matter, UV lighting is the only thing that breaks those fields down over time, so it doesn't make any difference how much you use it. And, you know, as long as you're brushing it and, you know, around the goal mouth in certain football areas, you'll wear the, the rubber off and the sand might go into, you know, so you need to sweep that in and stuff like that, but other than that, just let the games begin.
Yeah, so now we're, you know, we're working on this, you know, scoreboard, we've gotta, we've got about forty...
I've got a meeting over there on Monday.
We've got about forty-one thousand dollars left, so we're gonna have a STACK committee meeting, and we have an agenda, and that's one of the agenda items is to look at, because there still are some needs that were sort of put on as alternates. One is the portable mound, which they like to have, which, you know, runs around eighteen to twenty thousand. And then, we still, we have scoreboard, we have to get it installed. So John's been working on that, trying to get a good price, and, you know, we believe both of those things can happen within the forty-one thousand dollars. You know, some signage...
Well, we have a donation from the savings bank too.
For the, for the...
Scoreboard.
For the scoreboard.
Right.
I'm talking about the installation, right?
You guys are familiar with that Georgetown bank?
They approved it.
Twenty thousand toward that, so...
Wonderful.
Yeah, we set up that agreement with the bank. And, and then, we, there definitely needs to be some signage, so we wanna talk about what signs do we need?
Right.
Because, I mean, people can't bring their dogs on that field.
Well, that, that was also a topic of discussion at the Safety Committee. Signs are being made as we speak.
Yeah, they can't, they can't bring red gatorade on it.
Already have them made.
If they spill it, it'll stain.
For all the schools.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you can't wear metal cleats on it, you know, so there's, there's a number of things that, that are in these warranties, that the guarantees, the warranties are in place as long as you follow the guidelines. If you don't follow the guidelines, you know, all bets are off if something happens.
When you say red gatorade.
Like colored gatorade.
And red any, so the blue, the red.
Just stain the field, that's all.
It'll stain the field.
But we don't want some.
It's not necessarily gonna hurt the field, it's just gonna make it unsightly, that's, you know?
That's right, we're not staining the field. So, you know, we'll figure, figure out another...
Beginning every, within six months, it'll be all bets are off and everybody's going crazy. You know how it is, something new you wanna protect it.
Not if I'm walking that field, there won't be...
I'll give it a year, Carol, because you'll be over there watching it, but, you know, so it's a...
No, we, we have to maintain that field.
I think you should just go christen it, I mean...
We have to make sure that it is maintained, let it maintain.
Let go.
And that's, you know, something that we wanna talk about too, you know, what is the training, who's gonna go to it? You know, we obviously are committed to maintaining it, but, you know, that maybe somebody from GAA wants to also, you know, be aware of, you know, what kinds of things, you know, need to be done to it, and, you know, so I think it's just the final, the final little things.
Yeah, and I think, you know, Peter Durkey's so good, he'll be involved in keeping an eye on things, and, you know, he's a wealth of information and stuff, you know, all things like this.
We're looking into painting the G, maybe, that might be something with the extra forty-one thousand, you know, so, you know, we, we just need to figure out, and there's no invoice that still needs to...
You just gotta figure out, I gotta get some pricing down with all this different stuff.
There's no invoices that still need to be charged, that, John, that's, that's, everything's paid. Remember you asked me that?
So you, so you have forty-one thousand before I make another donation, or not?
No.
Okay, so it's forty-one, including the forty-four that I'm gonna give you?
Correct. There's forty-one thousand dollars left.
Okay.
You're, you're, you agreed to the, you agreed to the forty-four, which he's got in his pocket.
Which is the lights.
Because, you know, we, we were looking at the lights, the two baseball lights as a phase two, you might remember that discussion, but I think GAA and, and we agree completely felt that once you have that beautiful turf field, and in order to put those, we were always gonna have the poles, but in order to put the lights in, you have to drag heavy machinery across...
You would've put a very big crane on that field, we were worried about indentation and stuff like that.
Yeah.
We didn't want any dents on there after, you know, you're not gonna dent it by running on it, but, you know, some whatever ungodly number of, that crane weighs could dent the field. I mean, they'd be careful, but still, so we just decided that, you know...
They decided to do it all at once.
Let's, let's get it done now, and it's gonna work out, so. So we have forty-one, but then you have the twenty thousand dollar donation on top of that, you're not counting that.
Nope, because, nope, that's, so it's really the...
So, I mean, we're probably gonna be right about on the number.
We are, I think.
I mean, it's, it's probably gonna be right on the number.
Right on the number.
I'm thinking if we get lucky, you know, I wanna get that scoreboard in there for forty thousand, that's, I don't...
Twenty for the installation.
Yeah, I don't want it to be, I think, they, the guy had originally quoted me twelve to eighteen, and then, you know, the numbers we were getting from the contractor over there just weren't adding up, so now...
They were fifty-three. The contractor quirk said, for the installation and the purchase of a scoreboard, this is before we even had the donation, the total was fifty-three thousand. John thinks he can do that better, and my money's on John.
Yeah, so we don't have, we can't afford that, that, how that's going. So what we wanna do is be able to pay for the lights, which we're gonna do for that, then we're gonna pay for the scoreboard and get the, get the, the mound too, which is gonna be, it's an eighteen-foot circumference mound, it's, it's really, really nice. I mean, we have a little portable mound you could use in a pinch, but it's not like the real mound that, that you should use over there. So, we get that, those two things, and then, if there's enough money left to paint the G, then all's good with the world.
So what's the timeframe for the installation of the scoreboard?
I don't actually know that. I'm gonna, I have a meeting on Monday at eleven-thirty with the guy, so I'm not sure they can dig the hole right now, with where the ground is like that, but once they, I mean, I'm, these guys could probably do it in a week. They have their own installation crews. We already have the wire set up to do two different areas, so that we could, we could put it in two different places. We wanna put it down on the right side, where it look, basically in center field, so we're hoping that it's gonna work in that spot. If it doesn't work in that spot, there's the spot over on the hill, we don't like that spot anywhere near as well, so we're trying to avoid, we wired for it just in case, but we don't want, we don't wanna use that spot if we don't have to, because what'll happen is, it's a beautiful spot up there, I don't know if you guys have walked up, and you can, right up on, right where you kinda goes, that driveway goes right in front of the cafeteria right there.
Yep.
It's a real nice spot, too, you can look right down onto the field and watch games right from there, so we don't want that block if we can avoid it.
No, and we, and down the road, we, we may want to, to look at investing actual stands in, in that hill.
Yeah.
And so if you put, if you put the scoreboard there, that's not gonna happen.
Right.
So I think we're trying to look long-term, we, you know, it'd be nice to have a couple of bathrooms, you know, down closer to the fields. Right now, for handicap parking and handicap bathrooms, we will, we will put two porta-potties there.
Oh, good.
So that, you know, people with the handicaps do not have to walk all the way up to the school, but it would be nice if there's a way to do something in relationship to, you know, some, some seating, particularly on the hill. Because we will have three sets of stands that can be on the third grade.
Right, you have the portables now, I haven't seen those, so...
Yeah, we have three, 'cause remember, we had the damage on the upper fields, and Mike got insurance coverage, you know, it bought us three. We, there's one there now, but there's two additional ones.
Does that hold? Do you know how much that, each one of those?
Well, I have to ask Mike, but I'm thinking that, I bet you that holds, what do you think? I mean, it's ten or, ten or twelve.
Have you seen them? I haven't seen them, so...
They're pretty, they're pretty long. I bet you there's enough for, you know, at least ten or twelve people, big people, you know, on each of the things, and there's probably five rungs.
Hmm.
I think they hold fifty or sixty people, so I, but if you...
From a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty?
Yeah. And that's just for now.
Right.
And then if you put seating, you know, up on the hill, you know...
Is Mike coming tonight?
Well, I thought he was, but he's not here.
Okay.
One of the things by not, by having the portable bleachers is a lot of flexibility. That field is, I don't know if you guys, it's a lot bigger than it was.
Yes.
I mean, it's unbelievable with how it was cut back into the hill and cleaning out down the left field line down there, all that crap come out of it, it's unbelievable. It's gotta be, I'd say it's twenty-five percent larger than it was, you know, than it was before.
Ah, that's good.
And when you go stand down at home plate and look out there, you go, wow, this is really a good-sized field now, it's so much bigger than it was, it's, you know...
After we got through the retaining wall issue, you know, that seemed to work out okay. Actually, I think it benefited us, we actually looked at it and said, we think we got a better deal.
Yeah, it did, it did work out.
Well, there were a lot of issues, how many times did we say, oh my goodness, is this gonna happen?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, it's just, it's amazing how it all, you know, eventually, you just, it's one hurdle after another.
I know.
You think they're never gonna end, but, you know...
Well, that's why I appreciate both of you sticking through it, because...
It's so worth it.
I'm sure it was very frustrating.
Well, there were points I was a little frustrated, I will admit, but, you know...
Yeah, no, I know, but you could've, you could've thrown in the towel many times, and you didn't, which I, I appreciate that.
There was no throwing in the towel, right, John?
No, there was no throwing in the towel. There's, there's points where you run into roadblocks that you don't think should be roadblocks, but that's just red tape and, you know...
There's a lot of hard work and dedication here.
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of red tape and stuff like this that you wish you could get, you know, expedite these things in town projects a little bit better, but that's not for this board to deal with. That's another axe to grind in another whole setting, so, but regardless, it's a nice field over there, and at the end, everybody that needed to come through came through, so it was good.
And now we can really improve the quality of our other fields, so we can go from having some of the worst, perceived worst fields in the region, to some of the nicest fields in the region.
Yeah, I mean, I know, even the upper field, when, the way it worked out, we got a bigger field up top too, you know, we had, we ended up expanding that, I mean, that had some foibles with it, but that's gonna be a nicer setup too, when that's all reworked and seeded and stuff like that, it, it's gonna be very, very nice, the way they put berm up there.
And we, you know, we can rest fields now, because they're, you know, so you could actually have a field for a season, so that you weren't trampling it down to the mud.
And we need that, I don't know if you guys look at them, but...
And the new Pembroke fields are coming online.
We run the grass off our fields, we really do.
Oh, I know, West Street is, you know, dust and then mud.
Yes, well, they shouldn't, they shouldn't really need West Street in the future, but we'll see. But, you know, because those new fields at Pembroke are all gonna be beautiful, and remember, when the school comes down, there's gonna be a full-size soccer slash lacrosse sized field, which the town really needs, and there's going to be a pony-sized baseball field, because there's not enough baseball fields. So I think that, that's, that's just gravy. Plus, there's gonna be a small soccer field where the new septic system is, so that's, there'll be a little soccer field there, two baseball fields, and then another sort of flat field, but not, undesigned it.
What's that guy?
And then Jimmy Demento, you know, is probably gonna get his projects on the skate, skate park, but I think there were some fields affiliated with that as well, so I think that, you know, I think the town's need for fields isn't gonna be as urgent as it was when, eight years ago.
Well, we're in a much better, right, we're, in three years, you know, actually, by two thousand sixteen, we'll be in very good position to start really getting these fields into excellent condition. I mean, excellent.
Yeah.
There's no reason that we shouldn't have, you know, kids to play on grass, and it would be exciting for the people with younger children in this town, because they, they really should get to play on good facilities, so, you know...
When I first started working with GAA, remember, John, I had those meetings and we sat in Pearlie, and, you know, we were out, at that point, you know, there was a little financial arrangement, so much per kid or something, and it just wasn't working out. It's like, what can we do together? And it's just been a, an amazing partnership, you know?
Yeah, well, that started with, let's go to a project-based thing. Instead of GAA paying five dollars per kid to the schools, he said, you know, how about, how about we do projects and start fixing these places up, and it starts with the baseball field? And, you know, and there's dugouts, and they get grass, and now you get good clay on those fields, and then we have one of the best baseball fields in the Cape Town League.
Yeah, they do.
And then from that, everything just grows, and now you have either ideas, you know, let's do a turf field.
Remember, we actually had a plan. We had a written plan, what were we gonna do, you know, three years out?
Right.
And we followed the plan, and we, some of us started talking about the turf field, and could this really happen? And lo and behold, you know, through a lot of challenging situations, sometimes it did happen.
Yeah.
So, you know, and it's so nice, I was at the basketball game the other night, and there was some long-time Georgetown residents, you know, that both said to me, oh, I love seeing that field out there, that is just such a great thing for this town. And these are obviously people who believe in sports, and, but they're like, whoever thought that would happen, it's just beautiful.
That's great.
And so, you know, I, I think it's, I think the town's, something for the town to be very proud of.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I agree.
I really do. I think it's gonna be a great community thing. I hope that, you know, the vision is that we can connect the GAA program to the high school programs a little bit better than we're doing now, and, and try to make it so that the high school gets more support for their programs, so that the younger kids are down there watching them, and, you know, that way it feeds all the way up into the high school, and we get a little more of a, a little more continuity.
Mm-hmm.
That's the hope, you know, so we'll see how that turns out over the next few years, but I think it'll be, I think it'll be...
So John's here because, you know how we keep going back, is it a school project, is it a town project? So when we had to make the donation, of course, the town is looking for the donation, so they can make sure there's not a cash flow problem paying the bills, so I mentioned to John that we had a meeting tonight, and the school committee could accept the donation. And then when I was at a meeting the other day, Department head meeting, Mike said, oh, they should come to the meeting on the twenty-sixth or twenty, after the date, because they should have, the town should, the selectmen should approve the donation.
So it is the town.
So I think it is the town, but I just wanna, I didn't, I wanted John to come...
This is a check, and I'm here, holding up my end of the obligation.
He sold me up his end of the second half.
The second half, the other one was four hundred and fifty thousand, this is just forty-four hundred and twenty-one.
So, I mean, you, you can certainly accept it if you want, and, but it's, it's still gonna have to be accepted by the Board of Selectmen.
We all could accept it?
Well, we could all accept it, why wouldn't, why not all accept it?
Is there something wrong with that?
No, there's nothing wrong with that.
Okay.
But the official vote will be apparently the Board of Selectmen's official acceptance of it. But I, I wanted John to come, because I, I wanted to personally thank him and Mark, you know, it's nice of him to give credit to everybody else, but without the GAA, without their vision, without their continued work on this project, it would've been difficult to see it to the end.
Right, and all the families too, that still support the GAA.
And the families that supported it, provided twenty-five dollars of membership, you know? I mean, it's been a true town project, but I definitely wanted...
It's really about the townspeople, they, if they support the program, and you have people with vision in there, you can do stuff like this if you just get a plan together and you, and you, and you go forward. But, you know, we need good facilities for our kids, the young kids to play on, and this just helps our program grow, and hopefully it helps the high school programs get better, and so it's really, it's really the townspeople are to thank, I mean, they pay for the CPA money, and, you know...
That's exactly right.
And the two hundred thousand mitigation for soil.
Right, you know, so a lot of the stuff is, you know, the people of Georgetown have really stepped up, and, you know, hopefully they'll be happy with what they've gotten.
Kind of to that, quickly to that end, is there gonna be kind of a formal opening dedication?
We have talked about it, I mean, we haven't come up with a...
I think that's one thing STACK, I wanted to talk with STACK about, we should def, when we dedicate the field to Jim Collmore, we should definitely have something. But Jim Demento had suggested, gee, wouldn't it be fun to just have some kind of event, you know, like he said, park and, yeah, park and...
In the parking lot, of course, for that hot chocolate, right?
That's the way to break in the field right there.
Well, not stay in the field.
Yeah, right, we won't be staying in the field.
So I don't know, I, we don't know about that, but it would be great, yes, to have something that the town could...
I mean, the timing of it, to have a grand opening, I mean, it's, it's zero degrees out.
They're not using it, I know.
I know, I know.
You can do that later.
Definitely, but definitely in the fall.
Beginning, in the fall.
Yeah, well, what were you thinking?
Beginning of spring, baseball, spring.
Oh, the beginning of baseball season?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's something we should have...
You know, we have the parade, and town parade, and do something special, maybe bring those two events together, or not, I don't know.
Well, that's, those are all good ideas.
Yeah, I guess we'll have the STACK committee, you know, go through this and try to hash out some, some good plan to try to have the people come down and walk on it, and, you know, get a look, and turn the lights on, have them look at that, I mean, it's just, it's unbelievable, and it's...
Yeah.
It is, when you're driving down the street, like, behind Dunkin' Donuts, all of a sudden you're like, whoa, what is that?
The lights.
Just looks awesome.
It is, it's like in that movie Field of Dreams.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
It's really, it's really good.
But we do appreciate all that you've done.
Absolutely.
And the GAA, they've been great.
Unbelievable.
And the people...
And the people that paid for it.
I know, I know, you, you...
I feel bad for all the people that don't get any benefit out of it, because it took ten years to raise the money, but that's the way it goes, and actually, it's probably a little longer than that, when it's all said and done, because we started with probably twenty thousand that, you know, but then after that, it's been just a continuous, you know, ten-year grind to get to the point where we could afford to do something like this, so now they're gonna start over and replace it in ten more years, so...
Yeah, but just think about that, like thirty years, thirty years, you know, you can enjoy a very great experience.
As long as the people of the town don't let their kids sit around on these things and do this all the time, and not, not play sports and be active, we'll be okay, but whenever they all wanna play on those little devices and, and not do anything else, it's my pet peeve in the world, is just to have these kids sitting around, they gotta get out there, get active, you know, talk to each other.
Well, it's a lot different when we were kids.
Well, there's nothing to do, other than run around and do something.
Yeah, you went out and played, that's what you did.
I mean, we probably would've been doing the same thing if we had all this nice technology that there is available today, but, you know, there wasn't, so you had to go do something, but I hope that we don't get too far away from it, you know?
Yeah, I agree.
You know, I mean, yeah, the, the sports experience is where kids build friendships and they build, you know, the building blocks of sportsmanship and spirit and teamwork, and, I mean, so much, so much.
I mean, I'm gonna play hockey tonight at ten o'clock, and I'm still playing with three other guys I played college hockey with thirty years ago.
Wow.
To give you an idea of what sports do.
And that's exactly what we wanna do, is build a lifelong love of these sports that you can, you know, enjoy.
I went to, I went to an alumni thing that was a, you know, hockey game, and saw a bunch of the guys, and, you know, it's, it's just that type of a thing you don't get from just...
Nope.
Sports do that, they bring people together and...
They do.
A common interest, and it allows kids to get, to be part of a group and, and friends, and learn about commitment and dedication and sportsmanship and all that stuff, there's really, there's no, no better environment for young kids, at least in my opinion.
And for the parents, as we go to the games, I mean, that's what I...
Oh, believe me, it's crushing when it's over.
I know, it's true.
I'm an empty nester now, and it is no fun. For all you guys getting to still go, I'm jealous.
That's what I always tell people, I say, you're gonna miss this, when you're not doing it anymore.
A lot of good games.
It's terrible, it's absolutely terrible, you know?
John still, John still travels all over to watch his kids play.
Yeah, I still travel for it, but, you know, that's coming to an abrupt end here too. My daughter's graduating from college.
I know she is, yeah.
You know, so it's, you know, it just boom, and you're like, wow.
Well, now they can go and watch you play.
Yeah, no, 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 no. I don't even let them come. We just go play at ten o'clock at night, so nobody can see us.
The fact that you can still do that is a very good thing, not everybody can say that, so...
Yeah, well, I don't know. There's a saying that the older you get, the better you were, I don't live by that. I can't even remember the player that I used to be, I have no idea how I remember what, I'm dealing with now, it's not good.
So John...
You wanna take this?
So we can take it if you want, and we'll, we'll make sure it gets to the right person, but you might, you might have to go to the Board of Selectmen meeting and just kinda sit there and let them...
Whatever, either Mark or I can show up for that.
Make them happy.
Let them appreciate you again, like...
Yeah, I know, I see, that's a little, I think you guys have done enough.
They take a lot of TV time.
Yeah, that's, I don't need that.
There's always, Andrew's a pleasure to see.
Thank you.
So do you wanna, do you wanna weigh something?
Sure, we will.
Is it...
Forty-four thousand, right, John?
Yeah.
Oh, one thing that Mike is looking for, which would be easy for you to do, is that when they go to, when you go to the Board of Selectmen, they, he would just like a little, a blurb, literally, a blurb, that says how you would like the money used, so they just want you to say, this is a donation for forty-four thousand dollars for the purpose of installation of two, you know, sets of lights.
No problem.
That, that, I said it would be painless.
Yeah.
Okay. So the Chair will entertain a motion to accept the donation from the Georgetown Athletic Association in the amount of forty-four thousand dollars for the installation of two lights, two additional lights at the new turf field.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Easiest vote you took all year, right?
A happy vote, it's a happy vote.
Who's, who's Captain Pingree?
Yeah, I think Ruth was messing with me.
The discussion is, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for making the time to come tonight, too.
Thank you.
Have fun tonight, hockey. Yeah, have fun.
I don't wanna hear you broke your leg or something.
Oh, thank you.
Bye, John.
Very nice, okay.
That doesn't go in the notes, Laura.
Okay, so then we are moving along to the, um...
Excuse me, why are you worried about the check?
I'm just kidding.
Oh, oh, sorry, I thought she was really worried about the check.
To the canine search protocol.
Okay, so before we do that, though, I just wanted to share a little more specific news about Duca today. So actually, it was great, Michael, Pam, and Barbie all judged, and Donna McFadden, who's the state chairman, says, we never get that kind of support from school committees and, you know, superintendents, so, you know, I, I just wanna thank you for taking the time out of your, out of your time to, to spend the day.
It was, it was so much fun. It really was, like, it gave me an opportunity to see, because what I was looking to get out of it was I saw how well our kids did, but I wanted to see what their competition was like.
Right.
That was what I was hoping, you know, and I said, wow, it's amazing, like, all those kids, they were just dressed so nice, and they, you know, are looking in your eye and shaking your hand, it was very impressive, you know, and our kids, obviously, we didn't judge them, but they just looked so confident, and they just had that, you know, they just really, they were having...
Really?
confident and they just had that, you know, they just really, it was very impressive. Together and a sense of purpose.
Yeah, and even the people that ran it too, the, the DECA individuals did a great job. Down to a science.
Yeah, it was nice.
And they moved the location so that Division Five and Division Six, they used to go together. And and the decision was made to separate them. So half of the group, half of the schools were at Endicott College today and half of the schools were at Merrimack.
Oh, I'm glad we were at Merrimack.
Oh, yeah, me too. So there, there are four, there were four districts that were in our group. Um, North Andover, um, Peabody and Danvers, and then Georgetown. And it's interesting because each of those schools, you know, like North Andover, for example, has eighteen hundred students in their high school. They bring a team of a hundred and fifty, two hundred kids. Georgetown brought a team of thirty-three, which is actually a really great number. Um, and, uh, when all was said and done, because I stayed for the awards, twenty-eight of those students qualified for the states. So twenty-eight of those students will go on to the states. Uh, eight of the students finished first. Um, eleven students finished second, so of ha, half, more than half of the students finished either first or second in their category. Uh, five students finished third and four students finished fourth. So hopefully, and there is a process that might be able to include everyone to go to the states, that's something called an academic bowl or something. There's some other little thing, um, that students can maybe earn their way there, but the fact, you know, it's a pretty high percentage of the categories that the students participated in that, that they had some, some placement. So I did wanna, I did wanna share that with you because I, I don't think that's, um, I mean, they, a lot of places brought two hundred kids and they don't have this kind of percentage, so. This is consistent, though. That's one thing about the DECA program. It's a solid, solid program, thanks to Lisa and Li, um, and Liz. Um, every year, they, they come out doing very, very well. Um, and remember, we're only a five-year program. That, from year one, they started out. I mean, some of these programs have been fifteen, twenty, thirty years. So it, it's real, they deserve a lot of credit. I'm, I was so proud of the kids. They were so excited and they had their trophies and, you know, but one of the things that's so nice is how much they encourage each other. You know, it, you know, certainly they're looking for themselves, but they, they're very tight. They really encourage each other. They're very proud of each other, you know, so it's just, it's just nice to watch. Um, and I'm always happy every year that I, that I stay and and spend time with them and and their advisors. They're, they're great, they're a great group. Anyway, I wanted to share the results. So maybe, Peter, do you wanna come on up? So I, so I tried to explain to you in the orange notes and then I tried to explain to you in the letter, um, sort of what the purpose of this is, why we're doing it. And, you know, normally if we were trying to do something that had to do with like a, like a security strategy, we wouldn't be discussing it in open session. We would be discussing it in an executive session. But because this is really something that we're, we want to be public, we're going to post it, we're going to share it with parents, you know, students. Um, we felt that it was important to just talk about it with you in open session, um, letting people know, you know, it's, that it's coming and and why we're doing it and what we're hoping to accomplish as a result of it. So, um, as I said in the orange notes, we've been working very closely with the police chief, who's phenomenal to work with. Um, and, um, the administrative team, um, at the high school, middle high school. Um, and, uh, we were, we were able, Donnie was able to get his hands on a document after we talked it through, like what we were looking to do. He was able to find something from the Pittsfield Public Schools that we were able to.
Several, actually, I think we looked at four of them.
Yeah, so we were able, we liked this the best. But we made it our own, you know, with the first part of the letter is really about what, how we feel, we, you know, what our philosophy is, um, and and why we're doing it. And I think the, one of the main motivations is, you know, just, you know, all the information we're learning nationally and from the district attorney's office and local police departments and and maybe what we, we sort of know based on experiences we have, that, you know, the, the drug issues in terms of what's available and what's around. You know, I mean, all drugs are, are, are not acceptable in schools and all drugs can be potentially dangerous. But the stuff that we're seeing now, you know, some of the heroin that's available and it's very inexpensive and obviously, we know that there was recently a drug bust in town. Um, you know, the, the, the number of, as I put in the orange notes from the, the statistics from the district's attorney's office, that just in one year alone, there were two hundred and fifty overdoses and thirty-three, I think, when I say thirty-three fatalities. Um, so, you know, this stuff changes lives. When you start talking about heroin and, and drugs of that nature, you know, I think all of us, you know, as committed we are, as we are to no drugs, it, it increased our, it increased our concern.
Brings it to another level.
It raised it to another level.
Strongly addictive substances.
Strongly addictive and, and you know, I, I read a book that the district attorney's office had given to, to people that had attended some of his workshops called High Society. And it's a very interesting book, but the main parts of the book really talk about, you know, the, the drugs of the sixties and seventies are not the drugs of today. Um, not even the sa, even like marijuana is an example. Even marijuana isn't the same. It's laced with some much more, Pam knows much more about this because this is really something she spends a lot of times thinking about and studying about. Um, but, you know, the, the chemicals that are, that are being found in, in those drugs are, are much more, um, addictive and could seriously hurt somebody.
The THC levels have gone up like by six to nine times since the eighties, the early eighties.
Right. So I think, you know, one of the things that I think is important and Peter and I, you know, really believed strongly in this is that, you know, the best way to really help people understand this is through education, through, through good education. Um, and through doing things that are going to, um, inform people so that they can potentially make the right choice when it's their time to make a choice potentially. You know, bringing dogs into the schools is not, our intention is not to scare the kids. It's not to play games and say, oh, we're gonna walk the kids in, everybody's gonna get nervous for a day. That's not really our intention. Our intention is to continually reinforce that in our school, our culture, we want our culture to be no drugs. And, um, this is one more tool in our arsenal, you know, that will, that will, we would use as a, definitely use as a deterrent. Right? I mean, we definitely would see it as a deterrent, but we wanna start it off by doing something educational, like having, uh, state police bring the dogs in. Peter's gonna organize an assembly with the police chief and I think.
In the district attorney's office.
Right. And you're all welcome to come if you would like to come. I, I always get a kick out of these school times, but it's at like, what, nine fifty?
Four.
Four or something like that.
We're trying to do it in a period, so.
So you, don't be, don't get there at nine fifty-five, you know, you'll be, you'll be late. But, um, it, you know, it's, uh, you know, the, the hope there is that they, they will set it up in such a way that they'll actually do some simulations.
Yeah, uh, so the, the, the hope is that, um, that we really educate kids for, uh, all of the elements that could be involved. So, you know, uh, this, this is what could happen at, at the school level. This, what, what could happen with the police, um, this is what, what could happen with the courts. And this is what it's gonna look like. This is how effective it is. So we, we think, um, talking to Chief Cudmore that, um, we'll have a dog in like a knapsack and, um, some kind of contraband in there and we'll demonstrate how it works and how the dog will, will react to that. So, um, you know, everybody knows, uh, it, it's not a big mystery. Everybody knows how it's gonna work and, um, then, you know, make good choices.
Make good choices. And, you know, there are different, um, you can search different things. Um, so, you know, you could search just the, just the, um, the parking lot. You could search just the lockers. You could search just the bags. You could search a number of things and, um, you know, so we, again, that would be part of the discussion with, with the children. So, cause it, we don't want, it'll always be an unann, an un, an unannounced search, but we don't want there to be any questions about, you know, kind of how it will be handled. You know, um, you know, I think it'd be very interesting because as the chief has explained, you know, it can be traces of, you know, drugs in their pocket. You know, um, it doesn't have to be, you know, an ounce of marijuana, you know. Um, so I, I think that that's, you know, I think it's an, it's an opportunity for education, I think. And, um, we think that that was at the town.
Kids to know because this is gonna be somewhat time consuming. And, um, what schools normally do is they go into lockdown. So, you know, we don't want kids panicking and, and having no idea, you know, why they're being locked down and what kind of danger they could be in or anything like that, so. So, uh, you know, we developed this protocol where we will, uh, go into lockdown initially, but then I will make an announcement, explain what's going on, so.
Go into lockdown anytime the search is being conducted?
Before the search is called.
Before the search is called, okay.
And then he said he'll go on, he'll, he'll explain that it's a, that it's a search.
Okay. Can you explain what lockdown means?
Well, well, we have a lockdown, we have, um, two kind of safety protocols. One is an evacuation and one is where we don't want you to go out, want you to stay in. So, um, we have a, a code name for it, um, no big secret, Code Blue. And basically, uh, everyone has a, a place to go and most of it is in your classroom. You, there's a, a wall that's not very visible to the outside and you sit on the floor and be as quiet as possible. And while that's going on, uh, the, we're actually waiting for the police to respond. And then, uh, as soon as the police, you know, get there, then, then they're in charge of, um, the situation, so. Um, we've never had to do it real. Um, we, we, I think we're, we do it very well in our drills. And we do it, um, uh, at all times. What we, I think the second to the last time we did it, we did it during lunchtime. So, uh, that's our most vulnerable time. Um, so, uh, we wanna practice, uh, you know, any scenario, so.
So you mentioned the state police. Would Police Chief Cudmore be involved with the Georgetown police would be involved?
Yes.
Okay, and would you get the explorers, the students that are involved in the police explorer program to?
That would be up to the chief.
I never talked about that, yeah.
I think the chief would probably say that the, you know, the, only the people that need to be involved and only the people that need to know would be involved. And then after the fact, we, we certainly would inform anybody who, who does need to know the information. Um, but as he, as he's pointed out, when he has to do something in town, you know, when he's investigating something, he, he, very few people actually know what's going on and then it happens and then he will appropriately.
Well, I mean, more in the assembly. I don't mean in, in a search.
I don't know that we've got that all planned. I'm guessing, I'm thinking not.
Yeah, no, I, I wasn't planning on it. I was just planning on the chief.
The, I think the chief and the experts, I think, would be involved in.
Cause there is so much to learn and just thinking about, you know, kids that are considering law enforcement for a career path. Um, I think it'd be interesting to, to learn about the dogs and how they're trained and where they live and, you know, you, you'll have a demonstration, as you mentioned.
Well, you know, depend, now that you mention that, depending upon how much time it takes.
Yes.
Then we could open that up for a Q and A. And anytime we have speakers come in, we always let kids that are interested come up and.
So I, I wanna get clear, so the, the, the police come in, you explain to the kids that we're gonna start doing these searches.
Yeah.
When we have a search, we will be in Code Blue.
Yes.
And then, and this is during the assembly. This is what you're telling them.
Yeah.
Then the police come in and say, okay, we're gonna bring a dog through, we're gonna explore, uh, the parking lot or the lockers or blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, probably on stage.
Yeah, you'll do that on stage.
Demonstration.
This is what the dog looks like when the dog has found something.
Yes.
That's right.
And then are you gonna say what happens after the dog finds something?
Yes, that's what you're gonna talk about. What are the consequences potentially?
Yeah, for, all of the consequences. So the school, what will happen at school, what will happen with the police and what will happen in the courts. That's, that's why, so, so I will do the school part, Chief Cudmore will do the police part. And we have a representative from the district attorney's office will talk about court involvement.
Okay, great.
And the juvenile justice system and where that could take them.
Is this, there's, there's kind of a big splash kind of introducing the new policy, that's not the right word. Is there, and, and this is, I'm sure getting way ahead of it, but a plan for next year, since there's gonna be a new population in the school, sort of?
Well, well, we talked about that and we wrote that, um, I, I kinda wanna play that by ear. You know, I think my biggest question is right now that we really haven't finalized yet is, you know, we're unique because we're a middle high school. So we have to be sensitive to the younger kids in the school. So we're going to keep the sixth graders out of this completely. Um, we thought about, uh, bringing the eighth graders into this assembly. Uh, we thought that that is probably something that we wanna do and we're kinda up in the air about the seventh grade right now, so we don't really, we haven't really finalized that yet.
Does the, would the lockdown for this, would it be both the middle and the high school?
Yeah.
So they're, so if the middle schoolers don't, and I, and I understand them not being involved in the assembly and all that, but are they gonna know that it's not anything for them to worry about?
Yes.
Cause they're not gonna know.
Everybody will hear it because we, we don't have the luxury of having a totally segregated, uh, middle school anymore.
Right.
So there are always high school classes up there, so, um, mostly. And, uh, so everybody kinda has to, has to know, uh, you know, what to expect.
Know that it's something.
Right.
Scary going on.
Yep.
So this letter that you put together, when does that go out?
Um, we were gonna send it out, uh, the day of the assembly.
Right. We, I think you were going to, I'm trying to remember, we were posting it around something about the twelfth or the thirteenth. And I thought we were gonna have the, I thought we were gonna have the assembly on the fifteenth. That's what I thought. I have it in my book. I didn't write it.
Yeah, my hope would be that it would go out before and maybe the parents would be able to talk with the kids before they go down to the assembly. That's just a thought that I was, you know.
I think it was before.
Especially if you are gonna include seventh and eighth graders.
Yep.
I don't know.
Well, the, the thing is, I, I mean, I, I might not, I don't know if I can do two or so, we, we don't all fit in the auditorium.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So it might be like a closed circuit situation for the middle school kids in the cafeteria. Um, so we, we really have to, you know, kinda work those details out.
Idea, though. I mean, I don't think that's.
No, but I think it's, uh, um, I think the intention was we were going to send it out and, and post it prior to the assembly, which was gonna be on the fifteenth. So that.
I think you need to give advance notice.
Yeah, I definitely think.
Yeah.
Why can't you do two back-to-back assemblies?
Well, I don't know if the other people are available. I don't know if the, if the do, the dogs have a very limited, uh, attention span and, uh, yeah, so, and I don't know if the people from the D A or what the chief's schedule's like, so we, we'll have to talk about that, but I mean, if we did it closed circuit in the caf, like, you know, we do town meeting like that, so.
You do graduation like that?
Yeah, and graduation, so like there's TVs and it, it'd be.
I think it's effective. And it might be a little less intimidating for the younger guys.
Exactly, yeah.
Maybe.
Exactly what I was thinking, yeah.
I, um, I just wanna thank, thank you for doing this. Um, you know, we all know, growing up, it's so different now. You know, what our kids are experiencing is nothing like, you know, the technology, just everything is so different. So, um, I think it's just a real issue and I think, you know, what you're doing, because I know you don't wanna do it to catch kids. I, I get that and I think that's a great message to let them know that, that we're not doing it because we want all these kids to get in trouble.
We don't wanna affect the school culture in a, in a way that says we don't trust you.
The goal, the goal is to keep drugs out of the school, so that, I mean, that's the goal.
To remind them that they need to make good choices, right?
Right.
And we really feel that we, we need to do this assembly first because this is new to the, you know, the town. Um, talking to Chief Cudmore, uh, we kinda think that it hasn't happened for at least fifteen years. So, um, you know, we need to, it, it, it's, it's, for all intents and purposes, it's new. So we, we wanna introduce it and, you know, kinda demystify it and, um.
Right. Well, there's so many new things just popping up. You know, you hear about just different things all the time that these kids are subjected to and, you know, it, it is scary as a parent, um, just to, you know, have the kids have to deal with it. But I think you're doing a great job with, with this. I think this is a, a perfect opportunity for us to just, like you had said, just a deterrent, just to let the kids know that we're on top of it and we're not gonna allow it. Um, and also that it's, it's not to get anybody in trouble. We don't want to see that happen. We're very serious about keeping a safe environment.
Right.
All of our schools.
I just had a, it's kinda like a what-if question. Like, when you do a search and say, I know sometimes during Code Blue, there's like those very few kids that are in the bathroom or something that like gets stuck, will that like mess up a search or anything? Cause the dogs.
No, uh, it won't, uh, well, hopefully, uh, you know, I guess we should. We should tell kids that, um, you know, if, if, uh, the announcement is made. Um, that, uh, if you're in the bathroom, go to your last class.
Yeah.
Cause usually they say like stay in the bathroom.
Right.
Right, but, but I have, but you, you know, I could never say next time you have code blue because God forbid. That would have to have a real one between now and then.
Yeah.
Uh, but, so I, I will mention that the assembly, good point that, you know, if you are in there after I say. The purpose of this is, then go to you.
How long is one of the searches expected to take? I know, I know.
Depends on what you search.
Yeah, I don't know, cause I have, I've, we've never done it at the school before. I don't know how many dogs they're gonna bring in, cause that matters, um.
Is it like an hour or two, like I'm just totally.
I wouldn't think so.
I wouldn't think so.
I would think it would be under an hour.
Okay.
Yeah.
They, they just did this recently at my husband's school in Greenfield and he said there were six or seven dogs.
Okay, so it's a.
And how big is that school in?
Hmm, uh, four hundred kids.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And have any, so I know you mentioned Pittsfield, that you liked there, um, the way they did it. Locally, do we know of any schools that have done this recently?
I, I don't know recently, but I, I did consult with some local principals and, uh. They, they do it periodically, some, some schools are actually getting away from it, so, um.
Many, many do it if they have a reason, you know, it, you know, you, you don't want it to be reactionary, you want it to be in response to something. Um, so, you know, sometimes, you know, people, some districts do it that way, others do it sort of every year they do it, you don't know when it's gonna happen. I think when I was talking, I, I wanna say Whittier, Whittier Voc Tech does.
Yeah, I, I spoke with them, yeah.
I think they, they might do it, you know, annually, but it's at a different time. So, I, I, I think that's up to us how we wanna, how we wanna handle it, but as I said, it's, it's really, you know. An opportunity here to just continue to strengthen the message about, you know, what we want our culture to be in our schools. And, um, and that everybody has a shared responsibility to, to make good choices and maintain that culture.
Right, and what about the teachers, how, how have their, um, responses been?
They don't know yet, so, uh, I'm gonna be, uh, discussing this at the faculty meeting on Monday.
Right.
We, we've been really, uh, working hard at planning it, um, cause one of the things is that, you know, we don't have a plan, we don't have a protocol. Cause we've never done it, so we've done our research and found what we liked and customized it and, uh, now we're rolling it out, so. You are, you're number one, they're number two, and the kids are number three.
Okay, so Mister Murphy is here, I don't wanna put you on the spot, if you'd like to respond as a teacher, like what you think, great, if not, that's fine too.
No, I think it's great, in some ways it's long overdue, when I first started, um, the former administrative staff. Uh, had a, a project that was set up, I believe with the, with the local sheriff's department where, um. A younger member of the law enforcement task force was brought in as a student. And, um, you know, I think that, uh, you know, it, it definitely kind of, um. It put a scare into students and I think it yielded some results, I don't know all the results that it yielded. But I think it made students, um, you know, more aware of, you know. That the school's a safe place, the drugs should not, you know, be part of. So, uh, these things, they have to happen every few years to kinda make everyone aware, so, yeah, I think it's a good thing.
Sure, what about you Vanessa?
I think it's definitely a good idea, um, to like keep the safety and like, I don't think kids will be like offended by it or anything. They'll be like, they understand that you just wanna keep it safe and that it makes sense.
I think that, that is important to us, that was, that was a lot of our discussion.
The whole trust.
Is the whole trust thing, you know, if you have a community and, you know, you, you want everybody to feel safe there, part of that is that they can feel like people trust them. You know, the majority of students, you know, aren't engaging in a lot of behaviors that people assume they're, because they're young kids, they're engaging in. And I think this is a, this is an opportunity to, um, to be able to say to them, you know, we, we, we trust you. We're doing this to make sure everybody's, you know, safe.
I mean, I sure, I'm sure it'll be like a little thing to get used to, like the first time, might be a little scary.
Scary, yeah.
It'll, it'll be a norm eventually.
Yeah, it does be, just like, just like code blue became the norm, right? And everybody understands the reason we do that is if we were ever in an emergency situation, we need to, we need to know that our plan's gonna work.
Right, yeah, and so how are you gonna get the email, this, this letter out, were you gonna do US mail, were you gonna, um?
Probably email.
Email it, like through the morning announcements and.
And po- and post it.
Post it on the, on the web, yeah.
Okay, so it's scheduled for January fifteenth, which is Thursday.
Yeah, for next week.
Okay.
I wanna thank Laura for getting this out because I told you how many versions of this came out today.
Yeah, hold the presses, I read it.
Looked at it and then had the attorney look at it and there was some more revisions after I thought the, we already had a final one and then, so thank you Laura.
Number five.
Five or six.
Well, you didn't have plenty of time, really, I mean, it's not like it's happening tomorrow, you know. Well, we were trying to, we had our time, like we were trying to, okay, we're gonna talk with committee, then we're gonna, you know, we had our, we had to back, back it up. You know, back, backwards design we use to decide, you know.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good piece of work and I, I think it's, um, gonna be useful.
I agree.
Thanks Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we have the Pembroke, um, transition report.
Margaret, you wanna come on up? So Mike must not be coming, Mike must not be coming. And Joan, by the way, Joan, Joan's been having some issues with her muscles and stuff, so she's, she did go to a doctor today, so I, you know. She, she doesn't feel like she can make it tonight, so she's really a good trooper mostly of the time.
I know.
And Donna Straight, we, we have to make a decision on that too because Donna Straight was sent home today, um, with some health, you know, health issues. Related to just more flu migraine kinda things, but she feels bad about not being here tonight, but we can make a choice. Um, Julie and Margaret, who are also on the committee, can pitch hit or we can just, just delay it until Donna comes and then the three of them can do it. So, when we get to that point, you can determine which way you wanna go.
Yeah.
But the ladies will take one for the team if that's necessary. So, um, as we talked about, um, doing, you know, at least monthly, right, to keep everybody informed about. Things we're talking about and, um, tomorrow's Friday, so we have our one o'clock, you know, uh, meeting that's scheduled, um. Uh, sometimes Joan attends, you know, sometimes Julie attends, you know, just really depends on what we're talking about, um.
This was a lot.
This was a lot, oh my goodness. I wanted to write it for you so that you could see, um, more specifically. So like, you know, this, and, and I have to just tell you, this is just a few of the decisions that, that need to get made. And as you can see, the complexity of them, you, you know, in order to make these decisions, you have to meet with people, you have to. You know, you have to do your, do your homework, you have to consider, you know, contractual, um, situations, there's just, there's a lot to it. And obviously, our biggest priority right now is really trying to nail down the staffing because we, obviously, we're trying to work it into the budget, but we also. You know, understand the anxiety any staff might be feeling about, gee, am I going, am I staying, you know, how, who's, yeah, all of that whole seniority thing. I mean, it's not just as simple as you see here, that's why I took the time to write it, so you could see the, the level of thought that has to go into. Into these things, um, but, and I was also thinking that. You know, I, I should figure out a way to sort of, uh, post some of this stuff so that people in the public can, can sort of follow it. You know, here, you know, here are the decisions that are, that are being made, I, I might be able to do that through the blog, I, I just have to think, think about that. Because, you know, obviously, I want the committee to be infor- involved, informed, but it, it's, there's no secrets to, to what we're doing. Um, and the discussions that we're having, so, um, we can, Margaret and I can answer any questions that you might have that isn't clear here, but. You know, we have been talking, a lot of people have been asking about the sixth grade configuration, how, what's that model gonna look like? So, I gave you some details on that, um, we have upcoming, some of these things are driven by deadlines that are coming up. So in case, in terms of the preschool, we have a preschool parent meeting coming up, so we need to be.
That's just next week, yes.
Yeah, which means, which is why we, which is why we have to, you know, uh, have things, you know, decided. So we know what we're presenting to the parents, um, so, you know, that, the preschool, um, is definitely something that we're working on. Um, picking up and dropping off, lots of people have, I, I think the parent survey indicated that people in both schools had. Questions about how all was gonna be handled logistically, um, so I've written to you a little bit about, you know, how we're engaging the safety committee. And Margaret's engaging her school council and we're actually gonna go out and drive it and try to look at the different scenarios that, that might work. Um, obviously, staffing, um, is a, is a big one, uh, traditions and celebrations, people wanna know, you know, sort of. What are you doing going forward and so there's actually committees of people working on that that will, um, uh, report on. Where that's going and the quilts, it was sort of sad, you know, Camille's quilt's down, you know, I call it Camille's quilt, but the, the commit, the quilt that was there. It's not there now, um, and, you know, so these kinda things are gonna start to happen, you know, where people are gonna sort of have some anxiety around. Okay, this is really happening, the change is happening, but the quilts, um, we have decided that two of, we picked two of the pearly quilts. And Margaret put something out to her faculty, you know, having them.
At both schools.
At both schools.
At Pembroke, um, teachers came back and children, two of the quilts down. I wanted to prepare them, that when you come back, they're, they're down, but don't worry, they're just being cleaned, they're going to be put up. And then at Pearly, to prepare that, we, we were going to take a couple down and to start that process of, you know, which, which ones are gonna go. But kind of that symbolic joining.
But Margaret, but Margaret gave.
My mom helped make.
Oh, well, they're gonna go to the new school, so your mom can be happy about that, but, um, but I think, you know, the way Margaret held. The way Margaret handled that was really important because she, she actually gave them the opportunity to determine whether or not those quilts. You know, people felt strongly that a couple of quilts should go, you know, not just, we're moving the quilts, which ones do you want, you know, so it, there is a. It is a little delicate, right, you have to handle it in a delicate way and, you know, we want people to feel like, you know, they're leaving Pearly. And that we're gonna celebrate that and what, what all those wonderful memories are about that school and, and look forward to, you know. What can we look forward to going forward and it, it does take time, you know, it, it is a big move.
We also have to keep the decor of the Pearly, you know, fun and meaningful.
Absolutely.
So that's why we, that important piece of, we're not taking all of them, but we're taking some, so it is the symbolism of the joining, but then it was. Then which ones go, like how do you, how do you even choose that?
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, but we've chosen a couple.
So they'll be, they're being cleaned and then they're gonna be fireproofed, so we wanna make, cause people had raised some concerns about the fireproofing and. So we, we have, we alerted the company to the concern about that, um, and the, I already know where the, you know, where they're gonna be hung in the cafeteria. But that's another thing we've been talking about, like where would we want, where would be the best place to represent? You know, the, the quilts, where, where, where would those quilts be best? So they're, they don't, they're not just Pearly Pembroke, it's, you know, the new school, that, you know, things are emerged.
And then I wanna even add to this because since the press, I mean, things are happening all the time, um, yesterday morning. We met with school council and started talking about the handbook, because that is another big project that's going to have to get taken care of. Because, of course, we are taking three handbooks and putting them into one, so Barry Belanger had the middle school handbook up on the smartboard. And then we had our Pearly Pembroke handbook kinds, you know, in front of us and we started with the discipline. So, our entire session was really looking at discipline in the middle school and, you know, kindergarten through grade five. And, and how we, what, what do we want, so, you know, because that will come before you in the fall. But that is a lot to go through, just the management, um, you know, we had talked about through the years, things get added into the handbook. So that before you know it, there's really no rhyme or reason to it, you know, you go to look for something and you really don't even know where to look. So we wanna clean that up, um, just kind of move all the laws and, um, the state, you know, the state and, and federal laws. Put them into the appendix so that just the body of it is just pretty clean, so, um, you know, so that work will continue. Throughout the spring as well.
So I, I really have a question about this.
You do or you?
I do have a question just about the sixth grade, so you're going, you have five content teachers, but there's six rooms up there on that third floor, right? That are designated sixth grade rooms, and so all the sixth grade students throughout the day will be divided among those rooms. Except for when they're with their specialist art or music or.
Right.
In which case they'll be in a, a designated art room or music room or in the library.
Right.
Computers will be where for them?
Well, there's two, there will be a computer lab, um, in the library and then there'll also be carts. So that carts could go to the room, but for, you know, they would leave the class for their technology time.
And we would expect that probably in the technology lab on the side near the library.
I'm just envisioning a lot of commotion every forty-five minutes on that third floor. As students try, go to their locker to get their book or their homework for their next class.
They don't necessarily do that, they usually carry their backpack along with them like they do.
I mean, that, that's a piece of what we need to help children learn to do. Because when they go obviously into seventh grade, that's what they're gonna be doing.
Absolutely, but in the, in the, at the Pembroke, there are gonna be fifth graders in that hallway who are going.
And fifth grade is, we're talking, they will be doing some switching also, that we are not as final on how that will look, but. Start in fifth grade, maybe you switch for one, then by the time you get to sixth grade, okay, you are gonna switch around.
I'm just, I'm just more thinking of the noise and distraction that is, that the potential for that, that could be on that third floor.
I think the fifth grade and the sixth grade are, are, those are long hallways, there, there, remember, there's that area in the middle. You know, so I, I don't, I think the sixth grade is going to be pretty much on one end of the building.
So, I, that's a, okay, I envisioned like fifth grade on one side, sixth grade on the other, but you were talking about.
Right.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
And again, as you say, the rooms are, so you might be walking ten feet.
Right, I understand, but I was more, I mean, to me, middle school was all about the locker, going to your locker every chance you get. It's like, I don't have to carry my books anymore, I can put them all in the locker, right?
Right.
So, so that seems to me that just, I was trying to envision, like, how do you have fifth grade classrooms that are staying stable? And every forty-five minutes, they're hearing.
Right.
Commotion in the hallway, it seems like a, just potential for.
You know, and, and again, much you have to kind of live your life to know how to, what to do. So, uh, we can have the best laid plans and then the first day, whoa, yeah, that didn't work, but I. So I think we have to base it on what we, what we envisioned for the, you know, the education piece and then the, you know, the actual, the way. We're, we're doing it, tho- those are what we have children do, you know, when, when you're leaving, here's what you're going to do, that's the routine that children get into. So I think we have to make that decision on what, what we envision and then we play it out, you know, if it doesn't work, we try something else. But with the end goal that we are preparing them for that seventh grade.
Sure, sure.
And you said you plan, you're gonna go back to changing classes for fifth grade as well?
Probably, because again.
I had that in fifth grade, so.
Right, I remember fifth grade being that kids would change class, they, for a science and a math class.
Talking about the teaming structure.
Which would be more English and social studies.
To prepare them for that sixth grade when now they're pretty much changing.
Progression of change.
Right, right.
Yeah, one of the things that I think we hear often in, you know, over the years is the, the que- the concerns about transitions. How do we prepare kids, whether it's going to a new school, to a new grade, you know, is there, is there a sort of a logical progression? And I think we've kind of come to the conclusion that we could do that better and this is an opportunity, having a new school, new grade spans. It, it is a good opportunity to, to look at it again and you get to create the, you know, a, a situation that we might think is better than what we've done. Now, now we're, we'll, we feel we'll have a better transition from six to seven.
Yeah.
You know, whereas that's always been a challenge, that fifth to sixth grade year, and we won't have to make the first to second grade. Because that's, you know, now, once kids enter the school, they're, they're, they're part of that school community now until they leave sixth grade.
I think that progression will be awesome as well, cause I know I'm in Peer Leaders and we usually, for the past few years, we've gone to Pembroke. To talk to the fifth graders about moving up to sixth grade and what the difference is and they're always like, do we see high schoolers all the time?
They get nervous, yeah.
Yeah, like you sink into it, but like, uh, this year we don't have to come up, cause it's a little different for next year, but, um, just thinking about the difference. The small progressions for each year, I think that'll be a lot more helpful, cause I know fifth grade for me was different because I did switch classes. So going to sixth grade was nothing, but for the year after me, that's when they stopped, so that, I don't know if that was different for them.
I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah, good.
So, I, I'm just curious also, you say group. So I I'm just curious also, you say grouping for math is still being discussed, and what's the, what are some of the issues that play into that?
Well, it's, grouping for math is, it's, that's one of those concepts that, on paper, that looks good, okay, you know, here's where you are in math, so, you know, children that are similar, this homogeneous group, there you go. But but when you do that, now you have impacted your entire day, because those children, in essence, have to move together wherever they go, because it's very difficult to take those twenty children, and then for for one hour, then where do you go next? So the, so, so- Because then, then it's, in in essence, you're, you're saying, that group is staying together. And just, just personally, my, you know, my philosophical view is that, and research supports, that you, that heterogeneous groups of kids are how they, how you learn best. You, it does, research doesn't show that a homogeneous group is how you wanna have your class. So, you know, for me, that is two big reasons why we wanna think about that, you know, I understand that, you know, that there are challenges to that, but when we're looking at the impact it really does have on the rest of the day, it's, it just, to me, it's a very difficult, you know, thing to have happen.
So the kids, so I'm just getting this sinking in, so the kids will be, they'll move as a group from teacher to teacher, but the group of students will stay consistent in sixth grade. That's not necessarily how it is in seventh grade, right?
Exactly, and that's, and I think that's the, in middle and high school, where you, you are choosing, you know, like, you're, there's your class, but again, you know, it is that concept where-
There are changes in each class, that's a big deal.
It's still in elementary, so, right.
That's a huge deal.
But I, so I think that will prepare children for that move.
And so why would that even be, why is it even a topic of discussion then?
Because currently, in the last several years, it, you know, it's been raised by a number of parents, that they're, they have had concerns that students have been, you know, that the top students haven't been challenged, or that the special education students haven't got enough support. So, the way it was set up is that based on a set of criteria that was public to everyone, students were sorted into, you know, a high math group, a middle math group, a low math group. But as Margaret's saying, what then happens sometimes, unless you can figure out a way to sort of throw everybody back into the pot for the other subjects, you end up with your top kids sort of following each other, and your your lower kids following each other, and your kids in the middle, so, you know.
And, you know, you may learn a particular way in math, but not in a particular other area, so now, you know, and again, what what does that really say or do for your your class and, you know, the teaching and learning? I I just think it it really limits, and and really does say, okay, here's the kind of learning you are, and then there's no, no way to ever change that.
Sure, sure.
And and the the goal, because the, you know, the teachers will be teaching a subject, is that they will be well-trained in how to differentiate in that, in that way, so, you know, if you're in an English class and you're reading novels, you know, there are ways to both challenge and support, you know, the the students in the class. And because you're teaching one subject, it's easier than what the elementary teacher deals with, which is four, four or five different subjects over the course of the whole day. So the goal would, I don't want anybody to to hear the message that, oh, if we didn't do grouping in math, that means that somehow, you know, we think everybody's average, and that there isn't an expectation that the top kids would still be challenged by the by the teacher, by the math teacher.
No, I think it actually, I, I like the heterogeneous grouping, and I like the idea that that the kids will learn math from a math teacher, who's only, 'cause I think that teacher will have a lot more time to reflect on, how do I meet everybody's needs, as opposed to a teacher who's teaching multiple subjects.
Right, it's difficult, is, you know, because the standards do, obviously, they they get deeper and wider, the older you get, you know, there's just more to it, so it is very difficult. Although I will say, you know, having said that, there, the research that I've read, there is no one way to do it, because for, some schools do it that way, and yet other sixth grade schools have chosen to remain a model where you are a self-contained class, that still at that age, the relationship between the child and the teacher is the most important determination, so that impacts, so, you know, what I've read is, there is not one way to do it. You will find schools that do it both ways, because there's no clear one way.
That arises above the others being clearly better, yeah, it's such a difficult time, I think development is so uneven.
That's why, if they're just not-
Some kids were very young at that sixth grade, and some very old sixth graders, right, yeah.
So, but you know, because the standards are where they are, and we do wanna, you know, we've just chosen to start this way.
Right.
You know, and this is what we're going to do.
How much choice is there, is this, when the students leave sixth grade, for subjects like, say, math and English, when they go to seventh grade? How much, how much choice is there in what they can choose to take?
Peter and Julie? It's not my underst, it's my understanding that they teach, that they have seventh grade English, seventh grade math, which involves the standards that relate to what the curriculum is, needs to include. I mean, it's not till high school that you start to differentiate biology versus physics versus, right, is that right, that middle school is pretty, has a standard curriculum? There's certainly vocabulary programs that we've purchased, that, you know, people do, there's certain novels that they do in seventh grader.
There's certain, I mean, like, like in science, for example, we we call it, you know, grade eight science, but it's, you know, life science.
But but would people have a choice, she's asking about choice.
Like, when you go to seventh grade, can you choose between seventh grade biology or seventh grade life science? Or seventh grade, you know, English literature, or seventh grade, you know, writing, or something, it's all the same, each of the classes-
In middle school, and high school is where you start to see much more of that differentiation.
Yep, okay.
Can we talk a little bit about number six, which is-
Of course.
The teach, the teachers, 'cause I know a lot of parents have had misconceptions about that, and can you just touch base on the teachers that are-
That's the teachers.
The certification?
Correct.
Well, again, it's, it is, the state certifies you to teach a particular thing, so you can get certified in a pre-K through grade two, so then that's what you can teach, you can't be hired, you know, to teach a grade four. So in middle school, you can be, you can be elementary certified, which is one through six, or content certified, so if you're content certified, you can't teach in, you can't teach in elementary. So you need an elementary certification, now that we're moving to a, you know, K to six, that's the elementary model, so, yeah.
But you can't have a five to eight, right, 'cause, so they're, oh, yeah, the middle schools are all, well, I shouldn't say all, there are five to nines, and there are five to eights, depending on the subject area.
No, but you're talking about schools, not certifications?
No, no, talk about certifications.
Oh, certifications, okay.
Right.
So if you have a content certification?
You, they're not going to be, right, because we're, we're an elementary model, a one to six.
If you have a five to eight certification, can you teach at the new Pembroke?
Yes, well, you could, I don't know that there are, I mean, I think that's the, yeah, I don't know if there are.
Well, that, well, that's, this is, this is the complication of this, right? So if you look at somebody, like, well, I explain that to you here.
Right.
So you have, of the two teachers we know are coming, one holds an elementary certification, but teaches, right now, at the middle school, a single subject, I mean, he has another assignment for one period, you know, but generally speaking, he teaches one subject. Then you have another teacher who's content certified in in a subject, five to eight, so he'd be teaching that subject at the sixth grade level. So, either will work, but right now, th- those are the two we know are coming. There are some others that, you know, are still, are new, very new teachers, which, you know, the year is not over, we're not positive if any, any of those people are going to come to the new Pembroke at this point in time. So, it could be that that the people are existing, their move, but it also could be the case that Margaret would be hiring brand-new language arts teachers, a science teacher, and we do know of a retirement for special education, so we do know that Margaret needs to hire a special education teacher for sixth grade. But that's why it's tricky, right, so-
So at what point does that, is that all determined, I mean?
Well, principals usually make decisions about whether or not they're gonna invite teachers who don't have professional status back, generally, in the spring, early spring.
By April?
Yeah, no, later than April, but, you know, between February and March, they may have those conversations with people. So, you know, we know what subjects we're offering, and we know where where we need to place teachers, we just don't know who those teachers are going to be at this moment.
So in other words, we have teachers at the middle school now, who don't have professional status.
Correct.
And so they can't, they, they have essentially no job security at this point.
Correct, you don't have job security, honestly, till your first day of your fourth consecutive year, according to the state, and actually according to the way our contract works.
And are, have, have you found out, are those teachers interested in coming to that?
We haven't pursued, you know, that, I think Peter may have been having some of that conversation.
Coming to the Pembroke, as opposed to staying at the middle high school.
Yeah, I I think those are administrative decisions, you know, right? So, you know, I think the administrator's probably having conversations with people, if they're people they want to invite back, I, we just, you know, those are all personnel discussions that, you know, are ongoing, that we, that-
That makes sense, right, you need to know if you're going to want those people at your school next.
Well, you just, well, or, or if they're, if they would be a good match, right? You you know, some people really wanna teach at a middle school and really aren't interested in teaching at an elementary school, so, you know, I mean, there's a lot of balls of the air around that, that's why it's tricky, but I think the reason we wanted to bring forward, the discussion was, is really, really more about, you know, here's what we think we're gonna do for the model, 'cause that was a big question, and I think the issue that Barbie's bringing up, that I have heard is, you know, oh, they're just gonna bring all these middle school teachers, and they're not gonna be certified, and that, and that is not gonna be the case, as I point out here, it it is a process that you have to be very careful about. And, you know, we, we know, you know, two people that are, you know, interested, and we, we're actually inviting them to, in services and things that we're starting to do now.
Can we ask how long these two teachers have been with the district?
Oh, boy. One for fifteen. One, one for at least fifteen years, and the other, I'm gonna say-
Is recent, Mr. Chanet?
Yeah, I'm gonna say five or six, five, yeah.
But they're both, they're both interested in coming-
That's our understanding, yeah.
Because even last September, so, two years ago, well, year and a half ago, I went to the middle school to meet with the team, so that, you know, to talk about, to start thinking about where you wanna be, you know, it is, because it's both, it's where, you know, an administrative decision about where teachers are, but, you know, we don't want people to be kicking and screaming, you know, that's just not gonna work.
Absolutely, that's-
You know, to start thinking about, literally, when you're in the hall, do you wanna see this?
Right.
Or do you wanna see this? So, because it's a completely different culture, it's just very, very different, so-
And the school rituals are gonna be different, they're gonna feel very different.
Their time schedules are different, the amount of teaching time directly with students is different.
The interactions they'll have with parents.
Everything will be different.
Everything will be different.
Except the child, I mean, a sick, the child's the child, but it's the environment that really also is going to shape.
A teacher's environment, I mean, your work environment is important.
Is important, it is.
I do hate to see, I love the fact that those two individuals are going, because I think they display professionalism, leadership, I think they're gonna be great over there. I hate to see them leave, because I also think they're great with this, with-
Middle school kids.
And not even that they teach, like, the eighth graders, but they're still so good with them, like, they remember them from having them, so.
Your diversity numbers.
Sorry?
Your diversity numbers that we were talking about.
Right, right, the men, yeah.
I love that, I do love that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's part of the change, right.
If one, and I, and I'm confident there's not an easy answer, but if if someone is, is certified elementary, or or the other, if one wants to get the other certification, realistically, how long would that take?
Not long, they have to take the teacher test, they have to take, well, first of all, they have, yep, they have to have a certain amount of credits-
Credits in the-
In in their field, in the subject, but they can, most people can get a, you know, provisional certification, initial certification, is what they call it, by by passing the teacher content test.
So that, it's, okay, so it is, it is as easy of that, as that, if these are the right people, and they wanted to make the transition, so it's not, okay, we're not just-
No, 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 no.
Close the door.
No, no, every, every, the people that we're talking about all, you know, know all those things, and this is their, this is their choice.
Yeah, a year and a half, that's a great amount of time.
Wasn't easy.
Right. A year and a half ago, you know, you put it, put the button in the air-
Well, because that's why, if you're going to take a test, you've gotta, you know, maybe you'd, maybe you're gonna have to study for the test, you have to sign out, you have to think about where I wanna be, then you have to go through the process, so, and we see how time doesn't seem like, oh, now it's two years, here we are, I mean, we, I, you know, joke all the time, the year's almost over. It's not, but just, it goes that fast, that here we are January, before you know it, we're gonna be in February vacation, so, you know, these are things that we, just really, we've had to plan pretty much in advance, get people thinking about it, so.
Definitely.
Okay, and then number eight, about music, let's talk a little bit about that.
Okay.
I know, I know, I knew this, we had talked about this before, just the difficulty with the-
Right, yep.
Scheduling of that.
And and this is another, this is another, like the homogeneous group, that if you put band in the middle of the day, like a, a subject, then where do those kids go? You, by having them take a band, you've, you've assigned their day, because they can't, there's no, you know, again, there's, there's not the choice, and so, and in, again, in an elementary school, the specials are, that provides the grade level time, so you have to have a place for everybody to go, so making that in the middle of the day, just, it, it, that drives every other decision. And I, I just, you know, I I don't want that to be the driver, that's an important piece, but that, to me, that can't drive every other educational decision of the day.
Well, as I pointed out, that the, right now, the current middle school has two, they have two specials, so it, I think one of the challenges that people have felt in the past, 'cause, I mean, I've lived through the days when individual providers would come in, like, the clarinet lady would come in to do clarinet lessons, and kids would be pulled out of class to go to the clarinet lessons on the day the clarinet lady was there, but a teacher never had a full class of kids, because the clarinets were out for this partic- particular time, and then the flutes were out, and then, you know, and while I think that's very nice for the children, and very nice for the families, because they knew the, and for the band director, 'cause they knew lessons were being provided, it was really tough on the classroom teachers, because kids were being yanked out, and if they were trying to do classroom activities, or pull groups together, whatever, so, and the same thing happened with the band, is that some students and families were concerned because they didn't want their child to never have phys ed. They didn't want their child never to engage in art, or PE, or any other subject, because what what happens now at the middle school, if you choose band, right, you have band for one of your specials, and you own, you have to have gym, because it's a requirement, but you don't get the benefit of all the other specials. So when I look at the data, that, you know, it, you can look at data any way you want, but when I look at the data and I see the drop in the percentage of kids that go from fifth to sixth in the band, when I probe that with people, I often hear, my child doesn't want to miss out on technology and every other thing, art. So, it is, it is a challenge, there's no doubt, and in in the, with the elementary situation, it's one period, it's not two. So if we were to say, you can choose your special, and and band, we have, one problem we have is, we only have, the same guy teaches the music, teaches the band and the music, right? So scheduling is a little bit of a challenge, but also, it would mean that those kids would have band, they they wouldn't have the availability of all the schedule, of all the other subjects, so that's, that's been the challenge, we we don't think, we don't really have a great answer for this, you know, we're just trying to weigh, you know, it it, it can't be the same as the middle school, because the day isn't set up the same way, for one, for one thing, and it's not, it's, there's a distinct music and a distinct band.
Is music still one of their specials?
Yes, yes.
And so, so what does the sixth grade music curriculum look like?
It's, it's gen, we're gonna discuss that, but it's generally going to be, we have a vocal, vocal music program that's integrated, and usually, there's experience with orf instruments and movement, and and some of those kind of things, so there is a using instruments, but it's not a band, situation.
It's the same, they're teaching the music standards, so, yeah, right, band is band, but then music-
Right, and right, and and at the middle high school, you have distinct staff for band, and distinct staff for choral, this is the same person for both, so, you know, So, you know, I mean, the door's not closed in terms of talking about how we can make sure, maybe we can provide some time. But I think it would probably be, you know, leading people down the wrong path to think that we're thinking that it's every day like it currently is. I, I don't think that's where we're leaning right now.
I just don't.
But there would still be an after-school band program for the sixth.
Well, that's what, you know, so then band, you know, could continue in a similar model, either before or after school.
See, what happens right now, like for example, and, like they're planning for a holiday concert or something. The music teacher will be, you know, the teachers are gracious enough to say, okay, you know, you can have the kids during this block. Um, you know, there may be opportunities to do something like that.
Right.
Right? Where, you know, periodically or how many, every times a year it needs to happen, that, you know, everybody will, um, but when you look at an elementary day and you're trying to put four blocks plus a special plus an intervention and, and you want there to be, at the beginning and the ending of the day, sort of a homeroom to do morning meeting and close up the day, you know, s- s- something has to give if you do that. And, and I'm not saying that there isn't some way to make that happen for some period of time. I just don't think we see how it can happen in the same way it currently happens at the middle school now.
Does band still meet in, in the afternoon, like aft- after school?
Yep, because there will be another concert in the spring.
There's one in April, right?
Oh, it's like after school, like as, there's a set day?
Yes.
And don't some kids come in certainties for different kinds of instrument?
Instruments.
And, and there was a time when, um, with, two music directors ago, when, um, the way Peter scheduled it is that the first period of every day, the band director went and taught a class for the, for the Pembroke kids. Even before school, I think he even did it. It was when Dave was here, Peter, you, you remember you gave him?
Before we, we were rotating.
Right, before they were rotating. So he could say, okay, you know, you're free this period. And he would go over to Pembroke, to Pembroke and he would run the band. But I still think that was before the Pembroke day. I don't, still don't think that came out of. Yeah, because obviously the high school teacher's schedule starts earlier than the.
Between seven thirty and eight fifteen, so.
There you go. So that would have been before the kids came. So it's, it isn't easy.
I know.
But it's one of those sort of changes that, you know, we're gonna have to feel our way through that. And, and the music teachers do want to meet with us, so, you know, we definitely, you know, everybody gets an audience, you know, everybody can make their case. And, you know, if we can figure out ways to, you know, accommodate, you know, because we, we want opportunities for kids.
Sure.
We just, we just know that there's not much about the same way the middle school operates now that's necessarily going to result in how we're gonna do it in sixth grade because of the environment is very different. That's why we want to pair, prepare people for the change. Other questions?
Can I ask a question on, on the preschool one?
Yes.
Um, obviously because it relates to me, but also sort of a, from a, someone from my perspective, other than knowing that I can email one of the two of you, I would have had no idea that there was a meeting on January fifteenth.
Somebody else mentioned that. Um, and it is, it's a little date on our website.
Okay.
And it does go in the Georgetown record.
Okay.
So it's been in the newspaper.
Okay.
But, um, that is the conversation. And we send it out to area preschools.
Mm-hmm.
But if you don't read the paper and if you don't go to one of the preschools.
Right.
You'd have to go to our website and you'd have to see, you know, the little date on the side, so.
So what's, what's a way to deal with that market, I'm wondering?
Well, that, that is, I guess, the, I don't know. I, I really don't know because.
Sign?
How, how would you, how would you expect to find out about?
To be honest, I don't know. It was just one of those things where you said, oh, I'm glad you emailed me. It's January fifteenth. And I thought, well, I'm glad I happened to email you whatever day it was.
Well, I think that is, I think that is important though, because that, that night, there's a lottery. So if we don't.
No, no, there's not a lottery that night.
Oh, that's the information session. So we need to know what people are interested, you know?
But I will, I will say, that is every year what I, I say. How do people know? Like, everyone seems to.
Okay.
Everyone does because we'll, you know, we'll have a full house. But, yeah, if you don't read the paper and if you're not in one of the preschools that we send the information out to, and again, you could go to our website and look, but many, many parents.
Sending it to local pediatricians' offices is also useful. I mean, everybody takes their kid.
I wonder if we would know from the census who had children of that age. I wonder if the town would know who had children of that age.
Because obviously if you've gone through it, many parents, they, you know, they, they don't, they say, do I have to come? But if you have a first born, that is, that's that population that we, I do every year.
Maybe the town would allow us to, you know, maybe they could make that, the list, um, available. We could send, just send a letter in, um, general mail saying, don't know if you're planning, but, you know, if you're, if you're interested and, you know, have a three-year-old.
I know, there's like, there's the moms group and there, like, there are those sorts of things. There's the Facebook page. I just, I guess in part, I sort of think, especially if we're trying to grow it. We can tweet it.
Too far ahead of time. But it is scheduled to go up actually tomorrow.
There you go. So Pam's got it set.
That's good.
So we can at least Facebook it.
Because, I mean, I, I, I might there with you every year. How do we do this? How do we get it to people if they're not there? How do we?
We might be able to put together a flyer and then put it at like Crosby's. I mean, there's a few places that people go that they do allow you to, C V S, you know, just to.
Live Center.
The library.
Yep, we do. We send it to libraries.
Those are a couple of things we might want to try to.
Yeah.
No, that's, that's a, that's a great point.
Very good thoughts. Very good thoughts.
Okay. Lots to think about. But, you know, if, you know, if you have opinions of any of these things, you know, just drop us a note. Um, and we'll just keep informing you.
Or also questions.
And any questions.
Right.
You hear them from the public?
You know, extended day are things that we're going to have to be talking about. So if you have a question of, oh, what's gonna happen with such and such, email us, you know, make sure that it's on our radar.
Here's what comes to mind. I know, like, okay, my fourth grader is gonna get her end of year report card and she's gonna be looking for, who do I have next year? What's her report card gonna say? And is she gonna know ahead of time that when she goes to fifth grade, she'll be switching teachers? She'll have the English and?
Yeah, when those decisions are made, we would certainly.
Yeah, on that report card.
And the, and the, and the parents, yeah.
Right.
Because I know that's such a big deal in Georgetown, that last day of school and.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Opening your report card and seeing who your teacher's gonna be in.
Well, that's pretty, that's recent too, because I had kids that didn't.
Didn't.
We didn't know.
Yeah. You used to wait, you used to, they used to post the list on the.
First day?
No, or didn't they used to post the list?
Three days before.
On the school, so people were coming up to the school to see the list?
I mean, we may have to, just because on a report card, you know, it's easy to write one name, but when you've got to do complicated things like, you know, all different subjects, it just may be, well, if it's, it's sixth grade and everyone's.
You're talking fifth grade. You're talking fifth.
Right, in fifth grade.
Maybe just put who their English teacher is.
Their, their homeroom teacher, so.
Their home.
You know, their main teacher.
So we'll have to talk about it.
Think about that, yeah. We'll think about that for sure.
And the, I think mostly they want to know who's in their class, not so much, I mean, they want to know the teacher, but they want to know who their peer group is. Is their best friend in their class with them and there's a whole, yeah, there's a whole lot of letting go of your best friend when you find out.
Oh, yeah, it's hard.
I will just say about that, here's my plea to everybody.
My plea.
Let's hear it.
Well, it is a reminder that at the end of the year, when sometime, and it's not very often, but when sometimes people are upset, oh, you know, they're not with a friend, I, you know, sometimes I do have to remind them that when the year started, they, they start, they were, they felt that way from the year before.
Yeah.
Then the year starts and they get to know everyone. So there's an element of, you know, we do try to pair, but sometimes for whatever reasons, they're not in with their best friend. And to, you know, to say, give it, give it a couple of weeks. You will start bonding with this group of people, these kids, and then at the end, you're gonna be like, I don't like them.
Also make an effort to find out who their child is in and schedule play dates over the summer. You know, when, when you know that you have it, your child is going, that's been my experience. When your child is going to be faced with a new peer group, I've been really pleased with how parents have reached out to each other and said, could we, you know, August, school's starting in a week and our kids are gonna be in the same class.
Do you want to get together?
Right. Yeah, so that.
But we do try, you know, we, I ask for parent input. I want to know those things, you know, who, and not even a best friend, but who are good learning buddies, you know, who works well with your child, because we do try to take that into consideration.
But you have to do that with balancing everything too, you know?
All right. So could I just go back to the preschool for a question? Um, it says, let's see, so all sessions will be full day sessions, but the co-taught class would be set up that if parents wanted a half-day program, it is available in this class.
Yep, right. Um, so would that be at a, a lower rate? No, that, because, well, because the way, the way the sessions are now, there are three full day sessions and then there's a half-day morning. But when we have looked in the past, so then a couple of things. Um, and when we have the lottery, we, you know, we put up the certain number of spots. You come for the lottery, then you fill them up and then we start a waitlist. And it's always been my goal to not have a big waitlist. If you have a big waitlist, open another session, you know? Just do it again, so you get people in. But what we found is that parents don't really want an afternoon session. That did not work well. It was, it just didn't work well. You know, littles are, they're still napping, so parents didn't want that.
Right.
If they're older, they want full day because they're preparing for kindergarten. So the afternoon session just didn't really work. So what we talked about was, all right, what we'll do is we'll make that a full day slot. But if you do want to come for half day, you can take a half day. And then, so in essence, it's just kind of letting it fill up, you know, however it wants to.
You would always have the option as a parent to make that day a full day or not.
Right. And then that would be the class that would be kind of the co-taught model. Because that class would also be, um, the director, might be, you know, a halftime director, halftime teacher. So therefore, you know, if you, you'd be able to maybe step out in the afternoon to do your administrative work. But now meanwhile, there is still a teacher who's going to be in that class. So you're, you're together, children know, families know the two, but the director can get that work done and still teach.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We were pretty proud of that one.
Yeah.
We thought we really were pretty creative there, didn't we, Margaret? Anything else on this matter?
Lots to think about, a lot.
So we're skipping over Mike again.
Let's skip over Mike, it's no problem. And what do you want to do about the R T I? I would, I would prefer to wait. I don't know what the rest of the committee would like to do.
It's fine.
Okay.
Okay, you're off the hook, ladies. We will reschedule. Thank you though for being able to.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Or being offered up.
Okay, um, so we can go right down to the financial report. We have an invoice for.
Yeah, we must have an invoice for approval.
I didn't even notice one. I didn't, Laura, is there one? You know what? I did see it. It was for like twenty-two hundred or.
Yeah, it's this one?
Yeah.
I'll come in after that.
Yeah. Right, C B I Consulting for the, uh, for the school roof.
Okay, let me think about this for a minute. Oh, I think. Yeah, there's nothing in the notes. No, there's nothing in the notes. But I think that this is just, um, the way they, this is their proposal. Fix fee service. So this is what it's gonna cost for, for the total invoice amount is sixty-eight, four, three.
What's this prior?
We had ninety-one, twenty-four amount billed. We paid sixty-eight, forty-three, which left the twenty-two, eighty-one. I'm wondering why she didn't pay that, because that was billed prior to the ninety-one, twenty-four.
Well, it, it may, it may be on the warrant, do you think? I, that, what she's saying is it hasn't.
Yeah, it hasn't been, statement of outstanding invoices.
That's what I'm guessing, is that it's just in the payment process?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure it's a legitimate.
So to speak.
Um, fee that we have to pay for the school replacement. I'm just wondering.
So it looks like, it looks like you would be approving the invoice for the sixty-eight, forty-three, right? For the total invoice amount? Because it looks like she's got the previous bill, you know, accounted for with the, the two-two, eight-one accounted for there.
Okay, so the sixty-eight, forty-three including the twenty-two, eighty-one.
It sounds like it does. As you, as I see it there, it looks like the amount of original bills and then we paid that and that's what we still owe. No, I, it looks like, it looks like ninety-one, twenty-four was a billed and then the twenty-two, eighty-one was taken care of. And what's left to pay is sixty-eight, forty-three. That's how I read it.
Is twenty-two, eighty-one plus sixty-eight, forty-three equals ninety-one, twenty-four?
Yeah.
Right. But why at the bottom would it say the statement of outstanding invoices, twenty-two, eighty-one?
I think it's just because it hasn't cleared.
Actually, clear.
Yeah, but it's counted for in the, in the, at the top, under previously billed.
Okay.
Is that, is that everyone's understanding?
Um, so the sixty-eight, forty-three.
Right.
So the chair will entertain a motion to approve payment in the amount of six thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars to C B I Consulting, um, for the Pearlie Elementary School Roof Replacement Project. Invoice.
I don't have an invoice.
I guess there's a.
Oh, yeah.
Two-two.
Want to read that one more time? Yeah, it's right there.
Okay, two-two, okay, invoice number two-two, six-nine-eight, uh, dated twelve, twenty-two, twenty-fourteen, as presented.
So moved? Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I don't have the original.
Um, none of us do. Joan probably had the original.
Okay, and then we just have, um, some subcommittee reports. Has budget and finance met? We have a, um, date scheduled?
Margaret Glora's working on a date.
We're feverishly.
Yes, we're trying desperately to get a date. Actually, I think we were shooting for the end of next week, wasn't it? Was that one of the dates? Because I, I know I want to talk to Joan about, you know, having everything ready for that discussion. I thought she said, well, I definitely at the end, you know, end of next week, I would have that ready. So that's what I remember from my conversation with Joan, so. Have you been sending out?
Laura just sent an email yesterday or today.
Yeah.
We're back at the trial point.
Figuring out a good.
We will get, we will get.
For the next two, I think, so.
Yeah, because that's important. Okay, governance?
Uh, we have not met recently. Our next meeting is January twenty-second. And we're considering concussion and discipline policies and something else.
More on concussion? Didn't we work on concussion last year?
Well, you, I, I have to.
No, really. It was a long, we, we did a lot on concussion. It was like, uh, pages of it. What are we now doing?
I know. There's, we, now, we have currently the J D something L C, whatever policy.
Yeah.
MASK, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees recommends the J J I F and J J I F R policies.
Right.
Okay. They're slightly different. There's some overlap and there's some non-overlap. A lot of different, um, districts around, most of the districts that I saw have the J J I F, which we do not. Um, so we're in the process of kind of looking at both of them and thinking, which one is best for us? Could we have both? Do we need both? Do we need just one? If we took one or the other, how, how should we, um, you know, update that or customize it to, to our district's particular needs? So, and we were supposed to have a meeting tonight, but, um, that just, it didn't work out.
Okay.
Things got in the way.
Okay. Well, I know you've been busy because every packet we have, we have the new po, and we have new policies and updates, which is great.
Right.
But I just remember last year.
It does seem like it's gone on for a long time. I know what you mean, but you know what? We've also been working on, the Health and Wellness Committee all last year was working on an operational policy, a return to academics, which sounds like it's the same thing, but it's really not quite the same thing.
Yeah.
Um, so it's just, you know, it's a continual, and I do think it's appropriate to have a continuing dialogue on, you know, head injury and, and how we, we handle it as a district, both from the athletic perspective and the academic perspective. Um, you know, students are content, seventy, there's seventy-eight percent more concussions in high school sports than in college sports. Um, so it really is something that we need to keep making sure that we're doing the best that we can.
Always had concussions, but we just weren't as, uh, stringent on identifying them. If we've always had concussions, but we just weren't as, uh, stringent on identifying them.
Absolutely. I'm sure you're right about that.
It just seems like that's.
And, but now that we, we know more, we need to do better with it and just make sure that we're always watching to make sure that we're, we have the, the safety procedures in place and policies. So yes, we have been working on it a long time, but we will continue to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
So January twenty-second.
Okay, thanks. Negotiating, uh, we're meeting Wednesday. And then the following school committee meeting, we'll probably do an executive session to just give you an update.
You know, I did, um, email Mike Farrell about like who was the.
The representative?
Yeah. And I didn't get an answer. I, I'll try again.
Yeah, I've talked to a couple of selectmen just when I've.
Yeah.
Seen them and I, I've gotten different.
Yeah.
Reports, so that would be nice to know.
Okay, I, I can, I can.
Cause we always want them to know they're more than welcome.
Oh, absolutely. Cause they have a vote. At the end, at the end of the day, they have a vote. They should, anytime you have an update, they should get an update.
Okay.
Uh, public relations. Um, our next meeting is on January twenty-eighth. And we're continuing to work on the communication plan as well as some other items.
As well as the, maybe implementing what, what Michael, you know, designed for us, so.
Absolutely. Very excited about that.
The alternative to let's talk?
Yes.
Yes. Um, safety, you had one?
We met this morning. We had a very small group, apparently, um.
It was too cold.
Yeah, fire chief seriously apparently had numerous calls.
I wasn't there, but I know, um, the Cindy, when I talked to her this morning at five o'clock. Um, she said that two of her other districts had delayed two hours, so she was worried that she was gonna have to.
We weren't sure where she was. We figured also there was something about the weather that probably.
I should have emailed Margaret about it and I just forgot.
We, we, um, so Margaret will be in touch with her. There's an issue about the transportation van.
Oh, yeah.
At the Pembroke School that she thought was resolved and she's continuing to work on that. But we had a, a lovely discussion this morning about, um, the issue of dogs and dog walkers at the schools. Um, apparently there's been a few incidents at the Pembroke. Where students who are playing have, um, slipped in dog feces and become covered. And had to have their parents bring them clothes and they've, it's just been horrifying. So the stories she told were horrifying to me. I can't imagine what it was like for the students. So, um, we discussed with the chief Cudmore what some of the options are for enforcing a cleanup after your dog.
I can't imagine not cleaning up after your dog.
It's very hard to imagine and yet.
Don't understand.
So at this point, what we have are signs going up at all the schools, which will encourage people to pick up after their pets. And notify them that police take notice. And then we will find out, um, chief Cudmore is investigating what he can do once he has evidence of somebody's not cleaning up after their animal. So, and those signs will.
Often be posted at the turf field.
Because we have noticed, people have observed, um, dogs on the turf field, so. Um, there was, I guess, some good news, which is that the, um, the culprits of the school vandalism at the Pembroke have been identified. And the police are working with everyone involved. They are not Georgetown residents. They're looking towards some kind of a community service. Something will be involved to that end, but the chief couldn't tell us any more than that, other than that they've been identified. And he's working on it and Carol has been informed.
So when they say that they've identified, so the, the culprits don't know they've been identified?
No, I think they do.
Oh, okay, they do. Okay, they've been notified that we know.
They know.
They know.
Okay.
They know we know and there's, there's work being done.
Okay.
Um, guy was wondering when the field would be available. He's concerned about kids hopping the fence to get onto the field and also about there is an opening with access to the field that's near the brook.
See, that, that's, yeah, so to the right.
Yes.
Remember I said that I saw a, a, a big group of kids? That's how they were walking out. Cause I said, oh, they're not jumping over anything.
They were coming, they were coming out from the brook?
So to the right, when you drive in to the right, that's how they were accessing the field.
Let me check it then.
So I haven't.
Well, so there's concern that somebody will eventually fall into the brook and that that will be, so there's a, there's safety issues. And, um, he's also, so we're just wondering who's responsible for monitoring at the field at this point? So this whole issue with the insurance and everything, the sense was the sooner we get the lock off the gate, the better it will be. Because as long as there's a lock on a gate, it seems to be more tempting to the community to try to find a way onto the field. Whereas once you open the door, people might go check it out and then they'll forget about it.
So when you said signage is being made, is, so someone's gonna make signs?
Yes, just, but that's just concerning the animals cleaning up after your pets.
Oh, okay.
We talked earlier about a need for additional signs, so that.
Was Mike at the meeting?
Mike Anderson, probably not, but that's why I'm making a note here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, so getting that whole thing. People, guy says, they say, well, why, why can't we go on the field? And he's like, I don't know. So just was looking for information. And then, um, our plan for the February twelfth meeting is to figure out the pick-up and drop-off procedure. What that new procedure will be, weather permitting, we will be working on that for the Pembroke. So, um, our goal is to get something in place so that the committee can approve it and we can get it out to the public.
Yep.
And that was our meeting, it was really.
You seem to like being on that committee.
It's such a nice group of people. I can't even tell you. It is a really, it is a really nice group of people. It always makes me feel like, wow, I got lucky when I landed in Georgetown. It's a nice group.
Okay, um, school building, that was last week, right? Or when, Tuesday night?
Tuesday night, yes. We had a very short, brief meeting, um, only regarding the high school. Uh, the committee voted to approve a motion to direct Carl Franceski, who is our architect of D R A, to ask Green Seal to modify their soil management plan report, uh, to address our non-reportable levels of naturally occurring arsenic. Thus indicating that our contractors should make their own safety plan based on normal precautions. Does that sound like what you heard? Yes. Coming up with the motion was a little tricky, but that's, yeah.
It's a good one.
Yeah, and our next meeting is on the thirteenth, so this coming Tuesday.
Oh, you have another one?
Yes.
Right away?
Yes.
And that will be discussing both Pembroke and.
They voted, they voted not to have somebody monitoring it, you know, so there, there won't be, there won't be anything like what was going on in the turf. It's a much smaller project. What, was it like thirty, a thirty-foot ditch basically?
Yes.
Um, so it's, um, it's much smaller.
Right.
And the site, and the soil, remember the member of the state guy, this liability follows the soil, right? They're not moving the soil outside. So there's not really any concern about that either.
Right.
Good. Um, and has there been a C P A C meeting?
Um, there.
There's one coming up.
Has not been since the last school committee meeting, but there is one, um, it's coming up on the twenty-first of January. There's a transition boot camp. Um, it's hosted by the Georgetown C P A, C P A, and it's in collaboration with the ARC of Greater Haverhill and Newburyport. Um, but the meeting is going to be at the Georgetown High School. Doesn't say, uh, seven to nine P M. And the snow date will be January twenty-second. Uh, so what can families do to prepare their sons and daughters for the future? Uh, this small group discussion will provide a guide for the transition years, the process, checkpoints and essential timelines. Uh, Carrie Mahoney will be speaking from the ARC of Massachusetts and she's wonderful. She's a very dynamic speaker. I've, I've heard Carrie before. I've been to her presentations. Um, will lead the discussion and participants will receive a copy of transition timelines.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
There is, the next P T A meeting, I was just looking for that. So March ninth, I know we're going to go to that. Um, Jill had asked that we go to talk about, um, the transition.
Mm-hmm.
She had thought that the parents would be interested and I think that'll be.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'll be a very busy, yeah, meeting.
Seven o'clock and it's at the library at Pembroke?
I believe so.
That's where they normally have them?
Yeah.
Okay, so March ninth.
If the location's different, we'll let you know, but.
Okay, and then STACK, we're in the process of setting up a meeting for, um, our, our final get-together to discuss some, um, last-minute things.
Yeah.
So that'll be good.
Yep.
Okay, so old business, we can talk about the meeting with the board of selectmen on Monday that we had. Um, we got in the senior center of Pearlie. I thought the meeting went well. We didn't even have a joint meeting. We didn't even call it to order because it really wasn't, it was just them, pretty much, the, um, the board of selectmen being notified for the first time, just like we were at our last meeting, so.
So it's informational.
Yeah. Yeah, but I, I think it went well and, um, an additional room was, was offered. So at our meeting, we had four, we had talked about the four rooms. So Carol went back and discussed it with, uh, the rest of the group to see if maybe that, uh, an additional room could be offered. And you, you found that it could be, which was great. But I think, I think it's going really well, but, uh, a lot has to be, you know, ironed out. Like we had talked about the memorandum of this stuff. Of use, the M O U and, um, yeah, a lot needs to be done. But I, but I definitely think it can be achieved in that timeframe.
Absolutely.
Looking, you know, a year from now, so.
I've, I've heard in two spots on the, on the senior end, there's a lot of excitement in the senior community about, about the idea of it coming together. Details not specific, but I know there's, there is excitement that something is happening.
Yeah. Uh, well, to listen to Mr. De Strad, who I have never met before, but to hear him say like, for fifty-five years, this has been a topic that they've wanted so badly to have and to see that we can be a part of seeing that actually happen. You know, when you think of it, look what we've really seen happen. We've seen an override with the schools. You know, new school being built, turf field, um, the middle high school renovation. Now we're seeing the possibility of a senior center, so I'm excited that we can be a part of it.
The town, you know, really improved the infrastructure on the roofs at the public safety building and the, and the, um, highway garage. You have a beautiful new library.
Yep.
I mean, there's, there's, you got ambulance service now, full-time fire department. I mean, there, there's been a, a lot and rail trails, you know, coming through.
Heart-safe community.
I mean, there, there's, there's a lot, you know, and I think.
Jim's been working on too, Jim Demento. I give him a lot of credit.
Yeah, he has not given up on that. We're gonna help him in any way we can, cause he, he's really stuck with us on the turf field.
Yeah, but it's excitement and I think the selectmen felt the same way. Uh, like Phil Trapani had said, you know, on his ticket, that's what he, you know, that he had wanted to see happen. I know, um, Chairman Eggenberg said the same thing and, and I know that, um, Gary Fowler's excited. It just, it's, it's.
Well, I think what we do, Ed that night talked about, you have a report spending six and a half million dollars to build a building and, and do it that way. And to, to be able to put something together for less, a lot less than six and a half million dollars, I think is a pretty good.
Right, and to see what they are currently using, you know, I just think it, it can't be.
Once we fix it all up the way they want, it's gonna be a really lovely spot.
Yeah, and they deserve it. They.
They definitely deserve it.
They definitely do. As I've said before, I've heard that a lot of our seniors go down to North Andover and. They shouldn't have to. That's a very long trek. I mean, they need to.
So North Andover has a program?
In their own community right here.
Right.
Yes, they do. And, you know, they have a, a large senior center and a lot going on in it and, but.
Well, that's the thing, so we welcome another community, community members to come too.
Yeah, I think Colleen probably does open it, you know, to, to other communities. But as she's pointed out, you know, she, like the birthday parties and those, those, she has entertainment. She, you know, she does a lot of those kind of things. I mean, I, maybe she does open it up. But I do, I have heard what Pam said is true, that there are a number of seniors who do take advantage of, of programs and other senior centers as well. So I'm, I'm thinking they have some kind of network that they kind of work together on.
They do, but they still shouldn't have to travel. You know, if they want to travel, that's one thing and that's wonderful that they have a chance, but if they don't, uh, you know, they need to be.
They should have the opportunity to be here, I agree.
Something right here in the middle of town.
So just, um, the next step with that is?
Um, I'll set up a series of meetings with, um, Mike and, um, well, probably Joan, Mike, Mike, um, Colleen and, you know.
And just iron out all the.
Yeah, we'll just iron it up, um, you know, we'll, we'll iron it out. I, I wanted to walk the space again so she can actually see like where would she want walls? You know, so we can take a look at that and, um, yeah, we'll work out the M O U and then it would come back before you and before the board of selectmen. And, um, M O U, I guess they call it. And, you know, we'll, we'll move forward on that, but I just think the most important thing is just to keep the conversation going. You know?
Question procedurally, I know with board of selectmen, we're talking about an M O U.
Yeah.
Sort of coming from them, it sounded like. What, I, I guess my question is what is the role, what is the role of the school committee versus the role of the selectmen?
Oh, see, I thought the M O U was coming from us.
I think it, I, how I interpret is it's a joint discussion. That's like how I've worked with the G A A in the town on coming up with something. You know, anytime I've done a M O, M O U, it's always been, you know, who, what are the interests of both groups? And, you know, how are we putting it together? And then my preference is that bo, both groups sign off on it. Because it is technically a school building, so that it is our, it is a property that we inhabit and oversee. Um, yet at the same time, it is in the town of Georgetown and this senior center is going to be a town venture. So I, I think that, you know, there's responsibility for everybody to, to agree on the terms. So that's how I would do it. I would look at it as, okay, let's look at the kinds of things that will go into the memorandum of understanding, just like with the G A A. What are the things that people care about? And then how do they, how they get reflected in, in a document that everybody signs and says, yep, you know? And then Colleen has her space and she does what she needs to do with it and we have our spaces and we do what we need to do with it. And, you know, we live peacefully and harmoniously together and sing kumbaya.
Sounds wonderful. That can happen, right?
It can happen. It, it can happen. We, we will have no problem with that. We will have no problem with that. I'm not the least bit worried about it.
Well, that's good. Thank you for working so diligently with.
It's important, and I, I told you, when I had in my head, when I was thinking about moving the kindergarten, I said, this'll serve more of the town's needs. And, you know, like I said, having gone to those sessions on those Saturdays and listened to people talk about how important it was to take care of the seniors. You know, as well as taking care of the schools, as well as improving the infrastructure, as well as, you know, having recreation, as well as having, um, a downtown center that was vibrant, you know, economic development. I mean, I heard all those things. And when I think about it, you, you can really look at each of those areas and really tick off a number of really important things that the town has done. And I know it's been painful financially, but honestly, when I think about what did Georgetown want to be? And then I look at what the consensus of the group was and then what's been done. The only thing really, economic development's still the, the thing that's sort of still, you know, tough to get off the ground. Um, but, you know.
But it looks better than it did.
Oh, my goodness, infrastructure-wise.
It's better.
Infrastructure-wise, I mean, they gave us a one-point-two-million-dollar override to really save, you know, the school programs. You know, we haven't had to cut things for four years. The town hasn't had to cut things for four years. You know, the, you got the rail trail and the turf and now we can upgrade the fields. You know, if we can have a senior center, that's a great, you know, asset to the seniors and to the whole town, you know? I don't know, I just think, I just think as painful as I know it has been for the taxpayers, I, I, I really want to have people keep talking about what, what is, what has come as a result of it. Cause there's an amazing amount of wonderful things that, you know, have happened, not just for the schools and the schoolchildren, but for, you know, for the entire town, so. I think we're all excited about the senior center and how we can, you know, help make it happen and, you know, what we can do to, um, support the, the seniors in town. Because they have supported us. And they deserve it, as you said.
Well said.
So it's very exciting.
Okay, I think we talked about the vandalism.
We did, and I think we're good to go.
Um, and then we just have, um, the first reading of, um, two policies. E E A H, which is the anti, uh, anti-idling and the E F C A, which is the meal charging policy.
So we will adopt those or approve those at the next meeting?
Right. Okay. Do you have anything else to add?
I just want, Joan asked me if I would just see if we could have a very brief executive session. It would be negotiations with, um, non-union employees.
Okay.
And it won't be long.
Okay, so, um, there is a, a need for an executive session, um, at nine seventeen P M. Going into executive se, session, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, for the purpose of, um, non.
Negotiations with.
Negotiation with non-union employee, employees. And it's roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. We will not be returning, um, to TV, so have a good night. Thank you. Thank you for watching.